This is the planning board, September 26th. We have a quorum, starting off with a hearing. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 11, notice is hereby given that the Bolton Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, September 26, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the Board of Selectmen Room of the Town Hall, 663 Main Street, Bolton, Mass., here and act upon the application of William C. and Cynthia L. Lord of 71 Annie Moore Road, Bolton, Mass., 01740. The applicant is seeking a backland lot special permit pursuant to Section 250-13, proposed of the town of Bolton and Bolton's residential zoning district for a property located at 69 Annie Moore Roads, identified on Assessors' Map 4E as parcel 7.
All right, I am in the butter, I'm accusing myself. But we need the audience to listen in.
I thought that was you on the butter.
Oh yeah.
So you can strenuously object?
If that's what's appropriate, yes.
What do you think?
Let's go.
I don't know. We're inappropriate to present.
It doesn't matter, there's no camera anymore.
Okay. This is a lot of Annie Moore Road, this Chuck Lord's Orchard. I don't know how familiar you all are with it, but Annie Moore Road, you go up the hill, about where it turns hard to the left, that large 110 acre orchard that's Chuck Lord's. So he, that's all in Chapter 61A, and he wants to cut out a lot for some mat. So he proposed a backland lot, he wants to leave as much frontage as he has left, an area for the orchard. The area where the house is proposed in here is currently not used as orchard. It's just open grassy area, it's kind of surrounded by orchard. Matt works at the farm, and he wants to move here so he can continue to work the farm. But it's pretty straightforward, it's a backland lot, it's four and a half acres, it's got, it's all buckland area, it's on top of the hill. It's got 50 feet of frontage, 25 feet of lot width, et cetera. It's pretty cutty cutter in that regard. So the house is proposed, the septic system's been designed, the house is proposed over here, and the septic is here. And it's really the extent of the development, the area where the driveway's gonna go in, there's already an opening there that uses access to the orchard. It's like a farm path road, but it's, you can drive, I drove and pick up through there to do the test holes. So needs to be approved, but substantially, and there's no wall to be removed there, trees or anything like that. I have pictures of it, trying to print them for me, but...
Pretty creepy.
Yeah, I can send them to you, or I can show you them on my phone, but we're not here for seeing through, but just wanted to point that out, that the access point is select for that purpose.
So this is all the orchard over here?
This, this is a private house, it's a dwelling house.
Okay.
And this, all that's left over here is the orchard.
Where's the house on?
I'm sorry.
Where is the house?
The house here.
I'm just trying to visualize it, sorry, in the middle?
Right in the middle-ish here. I've got, I've got a GIS map.
Oh, so this isn't part, okay, so this is a separate parcel, this isn't part of his land?
That is not his land.
Okay, so that's why it's going like this?
Yeah.
That was my next question.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, that, I think they had an issue getting a septic system on this lot or something. He originally sold this piece, and then there was, and then he wanted that for, I don't know, moved the septic because he wanted to do something else, so Lord sold him that piece additionally. So, so that house is, it's actually probably right about here. That's the, yeah, so that's that existing house.
Oh, okay.
That's the little building that goes around there. This is, this is pretty much all orchard, this area just happens to be.
And so his current frontage is from here to here?
Yeah, he has, I'll get the, just 540 feet remaining after the 50's cut off there. So, and I kind of configured this such that, you know, regularly shaped lot could be created off there.
How many acres is this farm?
It is, well, there's the 104, 101.4 remaining of the house, 106.
Okay. Is there any plan to do something over here? Or it's just, this is to get you the four and a half acres basically?
Well, it's just the way the, the boundary of the perimeter of the site is.
Yeah.
You have, this unusual piece was cut out, so it's just made sense to kind of snap that line there. It sort of makes the rest of it more regular, you know?
Gotcha, okay.
That's, that's the way the existing boundary is right now, so just working with what we have.
Okay.
There's not, there's no plans to do anything back here.
Do anything, just, okay.
I mean, could they, I mean, as long as it messes up back, they can, I don't really know what you would do over there. Honestly, it's a large area.
Yeah.
You know, and it's more, more, well, anyone I know would want. All right, so, but it's surrounded, it's really pretty, it's surrounded by orchard. This is all trees all the way kind of around here, and this area is already, I think they had peach trees there, and they, I don't know if they had some platter, they took them out of, and then it just lived their life cycle. But, but then there's, there's orchard that continues on kind of here when this cuts over. And they planted apple trees on their property too, that the Lords may help maintain it, the grain that they sprayed and forth and stuff. So the orchard actually appears to kind of continue as a buffer around this house, but it's actually their property anyway.
Any issues or concerns, Erica?
No.
Just a question, the address here, it says, no, it says 71 in the hearing posting. Here it says 70 and 71, an application for the address of order.
Oh yeah, they signed it 71.
They signed it 71, they wrote 70 there. It's all strange.
Any butters here? You guys need to stay?
No, I don't have the, the dog.
Just state your name.
Mark Sperry, Long Island Road, among other places. The, the dog like goes back over there, I mean, right now it's just, it's part of the orchard and...
Are there trees in that area?
Oh yeah.
Yeah, I didn't actually get that far, but I knew the orchard perhaps stood here, I think.
It can, it can perhaps round until it hits the stockade fence they had put up to the dogs.
Dog. Oh, this is, this is the lot of the dogs?
That's the dog house, yeah.
That's the dog house. I think it's dog house. Yeah, some comments? A good motion there?
I'll make a motion to approve the plan of land.
Close the hearing.
Oh, sorry, I'll make a motion, close it in.
Second.
On the paper?
Aye.
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 I'll make a motion to approve the plan of land for, I'm gonna say 71 and Moore Road.
It should be 69. So 70 is where the Lords live, the parcel that's carving out is from a parcel land that has an address of 69, that's what it said on the Assessors' Map.
Oh, okay.
So that's how I advertised it in the paper. It has the correct map of parcel regardless.
Okay.
So that, that's the address of the?
That's the address according to the...
Of the, of the big and hundred acre.
Of the big and hundred, yeah.
Yeah, and it was where it even had an address, so the 70 Annie Moore's.
Is the address on this at all, or is it all just the parcel?
Just the record owner's address.
Which, yeah, that makes sense, that makes sense, but they're subdivisioned.
They live a lot that's contiguous to this, but it's not part of this tract.
Okay, so it's for 69 and Moore Road, plan dated August 24th, 2018.
Second.
On the paper?
Aye.
And then the draft decision is in your app, do you want to just take a full look at it?
Let me take my name off there.
If you don't mind.
So that's, um...
You know what?
Yeah, the decision's raised, number 69.
You want us to sign this?
Um, you know what I'll do before the end of the night, I'll just revise the one signature page.
Take off the draft?
Yeah, take off the draft, and then have it signed, and then I'll report it to the town clerk.
Okay.
So Erica, procedurally, hold the malar until the appeal period is settled.
Exactly, so once I file up with Pam, there's a 28th appeal period, I'll hold on to the plan and the decision, well, she, she actually will, and then once it, it's 28th.
She can sign the malar.
Should we not sign?
You do, you do sign tonight, but then Pam will, you know, sign.
It's going to tell by the clerk until they appeal.
Take Mark's name off the front too.
Yeah.
I will, I'll go through and I'll clear that, his name is removed.
You really are sore. Throwing some kids, that's it.
Well, I bring the thunder every time.
Every single time?
Every single time, yeah.
Kids crying.
Still scared.
She's got three sharpies ready, she's on point tonight. Unless I have one. That's happened, I've had...
Keeps us going, keeps us going.
Myler's ready to be signed, and no one has yet.
Actually, while the board's signing that, I'm just gonna go through, print this one, and maybe I'll take.
To make sure you're printing from page two, or that's?
Not for them to sign, just for...
It's just two, and then the malar?
Yeah.
Erica, am I on this one as well, or?
Yeah.
Before you catch it.
That's all right, no worries.
Are you on the paper cup this far?
Uh...
To the America. Yeah, I don't know what you give. I think usually they would.
Yeah.
Who knows? Who knows? I'm just gonna jump into, I guess, so today. Okay, so I'm gonna read the next one. So I'm gonna open up the next hearing for 21 Century Mill. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 11, notice is hereby given that the Bolton Planning Board will hold a continuation of a public hearing on Wednesday, September 26, 2018, at 7:45 PM in the Board of Selectmen Room of the Town Hall, 663 Main Street, Bolton, Mass., here and act upon the application of 21 Century Mill, LLC, 291 Main Street, Suite 8, North Borough, Mass., 01532, for a backland lot special permit and common driveway special permit for a property located at 21 Century Mill Road. Identified on Bolton's Assessors' Map, Assessors' Map 3D as parcel 32, 12.8 acres, located in Bolton's residential zoning district, proposed common driveway will provide access to four lots, one lot in a backland lot.
So we went back to the drawing board a bit after our last meeting, and revisited the drainage on the driveway, and, you know, in light of how flat the site is, and, you know, relatively high groundwater, it really is difficult to make the drainage run anywhere A, and then not have much opportunity to do much with 40 foot water cables. So, you know, I was looking through stormwater management policy, and low impact development options for the drainage system, something alternative, and what we proposed is porous asphalt systems over stone reservoir. So basically, it falls on a pavement, and just absorbs through the pavement to a crushed stone reservoir beneath it. And that helps tremendously actually reduce the limits of clearing required, which were limited to matching the existing grade. So there's an existing 10-foot wide gravel driveway here now, for starters. We're widening it to 12-foot pavement with two old shoulders, so there are some large trees. We've located all, all the trees within the area of the driveway, and marked with an X, who wasn't to be removed for the driveway construction. But basically taking the driveway that's there, that really, I mean, it has no drainage, it poorly drains, it really puddles water everywhere, and it's gravel, and it, you know, it's just, there's just not enough grade to put up the water run, right? And so, so by maintaining like a minimum grade from the, from the street, basically is the half percent slopes running to the low point about Station 250, which is kind of the pinch point here for the floodplain, here, you know, and this area kind of come together. So the, the driveway itself is effectively level with enough pitch to just sort of keep the water moving, but the bottom of the, of the drainage bed is level, so it, you know, there's just enough roll in it to keep the water moving. The crown of the road is actually greater than the pitch of the road. You've got a, you know, 2% crown on the road, but the actual grade of the road is only a half percent. That just sort of keeps, keeps water moving. But the bottom is at level elevation, and it's over two feet above the water table to provide exfiltration. Now, soils like we have here, Ridgeberry, which is, is not very well-drained soil, which is reflecting the perks we had on Lot 3 and on Lot, on Lot 2, you know, that we had, I think they were approaching 30, or I think we might have 130, but they're in the 20s, they're relatively high. The rolls rate for, for soil like that is .17 inches per hour, which is really nominal. I mean, it's not going to do anything to really effectively manage stormwater in an effective way, but what it does do, it provides, it provides enough storage in the reservoir that we have, we can meet the exfiltration or the recharge requirement for the stormwater management policy. So this, this stone reservoir here is only about 12 inches deep or above the 3-inch stone, and it, it actually, you take a full 100-year storm and hold it in the bed itself without requiring any exfiltration at all to, to, to do up to 6, 26 inches of rain, 24 hours. So it, it, it holds a substantial amount of water. We've taken the credit for the exfiltration only for sake of demonstrating compliance with stormwater management. So what we have is a 10-foot wide gravel driveway with no drainage control that is not very effective at doing much of anything. We're making 12 feet wide paving and providing a drainage system that's in compliance with the stormwater management policy. And I think by managing all of that water right at the driveway location, really limits our extensive disturbance, the amount of trees that need to come down. I mean, we've got 13 acres here, this driveway is taking up about 8,600 square feet of that, which is less than a quarter of an acre of the total tract area. Kind of marked this up just to show the driveway in relation to where the water bodies are and the wetlands. Floodplains are shown here in terms of what else, obviously, we've got the riverfront. There's, there's a lot going on here regulatorily, but nothing you can't, you can't demonstrate compliance with the standards for construction. We're taking a driveway that has no controls, and we're taking, we're making it, you know, designed for a maximum storm event, so, and I, I think, you know, we're talking about, I mean, the land that we got, about environmentally sensitive areas and things of that nature, and Danforth Brook being a cold water fishery, et cetera. I mean, we're, we're really not having a major impact on the overstory of the wooded area for this driveway, making minor improvements to the width, not altering the grade. There's not a lot of cutting and filling going on here conforming to the existing grade that's out there, kind of working within the confines of an area that's already utilized for access to the house up here. So I think this is a good solution for the site, and just, you know, let's look for questions or comments from the board, and where am I gonna go from here?
So where do we stand, Erica, with the burnout pools?
So in your packet is an email from Rebecca Longbaugh, and in that email, she, she states that burnout pools were identified by DEP and therefore should be put on the plan. I think it's not until springtime that they can actually be reviewed and determined if they're certified burnout pools. So that's basically the summary of the email.
So the contention was that they already went through, was it, oh, why?
They already, they got an ANRAN.
You got an ANRAN, but what Conservation Committee is saying is that they can still determine burnout pools after that?
Correct, so in talking with Rebecca, the burnout pools are considered a new wetland resource area, so then therefore they can go back and reconsider it. If it was like one of the buffering, ordering dedicated wetlands, and they wanted to modify a line, they couldn't do that, but because this is a whole new wetland resource area, they can redo it. That's what she...
And then she's saying she can't do anything with it until the spring?
You can't do much of the burnout pools except during the spring when they're active.
And it won't be until the spring until, you know?
Yep, yeah, because the definition of burnout pool has to do with what, what creatures are congregating there in the light of day, and all that sort of thing, so you can't really know that when they're not actively mating, so.
I can make a comment possible. So Scott Otter, professional wetland consultant, so I'm representing this before the Conservation Commission. We filed several notices of intent for the project.
So you represent the owners?
Correct. And there is an application for the driveway, and then there's three separate applications for the lot constructions. So with respect to the driveway, there's no question about resource area boundaries and whatnot. There's no, there's zero floodplain alteration, zero wetland alteration utilizing existing driveway. It's very, it's a very environmentally sensitive design for the driveway, which I believe is the intent of this application. How the different lots are proposed for development, you know, there's, that's a, a flexible process that is covered under the Order of Conditions Notice and Intent of the Commission. Clearly, lots can't be constructed out here without an Order of Conditions, right? And we need an Order of Conditions for the driveway, which is before you guys. But, but then, these lots would not get constructed were it not for the issuance of an Order of Conditions. So we recognize that that's a next step to complete after this.
So you won't be, you won't be able to do construction until the spring, after the spring?
We won't be able to do construction until the Conservation Commission's Order of Conditions. You know, when, when that happens, we're kind of up to them. And we recognize that, you know, I mean, if, if the board here makes a decision with respect to the driveway, you know, the driveway needs its own Order of Conditions. And whether we end up constructing one, two, or three lots, and how those, you know, how they're oriented for a house and grading and such, that's an iterative process of the Conservation Commission, but the, the question of potential burnout pools, which at this point have only been identified as potential, there's, there's no confirming, confirmation of this at this point, but those aren't near or related to this driveway application. It's only respect to lot, lot buildout. So I think there's a way to separate the questions and not tie that question that the Commission is dealing with with the request before this board.
So, but this hearing is for both a backland lot and a common driveway, right?
It is, correct. The backland lot, however, is Lot 1, it's not Lot 4 or 2, where I believe the burnout pools are located.
Lot 1 is the one that's already existing.
Yes.
Yeah, Lot 1's the existing house.
So realistically, the, the, the plan that should, should really be before us, that would be accurate with, for this hearing, would be showing those lots as, as undeveloped, the improved driveway, and just Lot 1. And we shouldn't be worried at anything about lots 2, 3, and 4.
Well, we're here for a common driveway special permit to service this lot, so.
So the implication is that those lots will be built? I mean, so Conservation Committee says we have one, that you'd be here for a shared driveway, not for a common driveway.
Right, well, I mean, we're, we proposed a common driveway because you think it's the best and the most responsible way to access the property, and could this driveway be split into two shared driveways and not require a common driveway special permit? Well, yeah, it could, but then you'd have twice as much pavement, or more than twice as much, so, I mean, it's not, you know, I mean, we're, we're trying to do what makes sense for the constraints of the site.
Yeah, I mean, that wasn't my point. If Conservation approves one, one lot that certifies the burnout pools and says you've got one lot there, then you'd be here for a shared, shared driveway, not, you wouldn't go to the effort of a, of a common.
Or potentially, you know, a lot.
But beside the point, and so we've got a common driveway here, so your common, so if I, if I heard you correctly earlier, the new driveway will be at effectively the same elevation as the existing one?
Yeah.
For the entire, for the, over the...
Yeah, I mean, the profiles here, there's...
Oh, so you don't show the existing profiles?
Uh, it is on, yeah, with the other line there. You know, conforms to it within, you know, six inches of existing grade, just to pick up the low spots and a little off there.
So what's the elevation difference for the drive, I'm just trying to, the top of the...
So the lowest point of the driveway is 31027 of the finished grade, and the bottom of the filter layer at the interface of the existing grade is 30856, so it's about a foot and a half.
Okay, so your bunch of issues about the...
Well, I just, so, and one of the, one of the issues that we've heard from the butters is that the existing driveway floods. So if the new driveway isn't any higher, how, you know, we would not have up to four houses off of, off the driveway with a flooded, you know, with flooding occurring, as opposed to just one that probably shouldn't have been in the first place.
But the driveway is now gonna be a stormwater BNP, it's...
But it's still, if you've got enough water that it's flooding, you've got...
But it's not gonna sit, like, so it's not gonna sit on the surface, it's gonna go straight through, and they're putting a, a reservoir beneath it.
Well, why, why is it flooding now? Is it because it's just pooling on, on the actual driveway, or is it because it's from this surrounding area?
Well, it's rutting, it's level, there is...
Okay, but that's just, I mean, that's just normal, I mean, that's not really flooding.
It's an existing pavement or existing ground?
It's back to gravel, yeah, yeah. But, I mean, it, it doesn't, it doesn't have a proper crown to it, it's got low spots. I mean, it's just puddled, it rains, and there's puddles.
Well, puddles are, puddles are one thing. What the, what the butters have said is that it floods, as in it's completely submerged. So if, if you're at the same level, whether you have stormwater management or not, if it's same elevation and it used to flood, it's still gonna flood.
Well, I don't, I don't disagree with that, okay? Can I, can I make a point? So we recognize that there's floodplain here, 100-year floodplain, and all that is is an elevation that's determined by FEMA for an area that's likely to flood or has a 1% likelihood of flooding. I mean, they call it a 100-year event, but it's, it's any given year, 1% chance.
So 1%.
1% chance, yes.
Right, so the fact that, that the area's been known to flood or has flooded isn't unusual, and it's not surprising, and we have 100-year flood zone for a reason, you know, for ensuring improvements, buildings within, that are built within the flood zone or below the flood elevation adjacent to the flood zone. So, I mean, it's a regulatory area, it's basically cautioning you as a, as a designer, as a potential developer, or whatever, to, to, to heed that. And either you, you need to build above the flood zone, or you need to get a higher rate of flood insurance. So we, we've been out and clearly delineated the, the floodplain by survey out here, and we have that accurately shown on the plan, so we know where it is.
What's Hill, they should get some?
It's 310.
It's 310, okay, thank you.
And then it, it, once you pass the, the old railroad bed, it jumps up on the other side to, I think, 311.
I think it's 311, yeah.
Yeah, like when you get to this, this sort of, this, this is basically a dam, they built the railroad grade over here, and then this is, this is higher over here on this side. It's a kind of choke going under the old grade there, but, you know, the site's been designed in... But, you know, the site's been designed in, in compliance with the, the regulations. And this, we really spent a lot of time determining what the existing conditions are and designing around what's here, you know? And, you know, we can't control if there's high groundwater, we can't control if there's floodplain, but we can control or we can demonstrate that we meet the dimensional requirements of zoning. We can demonstrate that we've handled the responsible design for drainage. We can demonstrate that we're not having excessive amounts of site disturbance. Thirteen acres, you know, we've got a quarter acre for the driveway. You figure a quarter acre or so per house site, you know, total site disturbance. Maybe we should say it's a third of an acre, a half of an acre per, per, per house would be generous. But out here, given the, the well and setbacks, these house sites are probably gonna be 10,000 to 15,000 square feet of site disturbance a piece, enough to build the septic, the house, modest yard area, so. And, and the balance of the site, it's largely protected. We try to stay away from the flood zone, even though we're allowed to work within it, provided we don't fill it in. It's there as a volume measure that we don't take any flood storage away without compensating for it elsewhere. So we're, we're doing all of that. We've got groundwater considerations for the septic systems. We've got, you know, percolation rate constraints with Title V. And there's, there's a lot of different regulatory things going on here that, you know, it's been a long process of demonstrating that, that these slots comply with those things. So, you know, this isn't kind of a knee jerk, you know, plan. I mean, there's been a lot of planning going into thinking about what, what really makes sense out here and taking into consideration all the constraints, the riverfront, the floodplain, the water table, et cetera, so.
I had a couple technical questions on the.
Sure.
So you've, you've noted in the storm report that it's sea soils, you said it's, you know, it's not the best soils. Where, where is actually groundwater, where is the elevation groundwater?
Well, so on, the closest one is probably about Station 1150 adjacent to the septic on lot three is 10171. That was at 60 inches, I think it's on the.
Sorry, yes, I missed it.
It's on the profile, yeah. I've got, so estimated seasonal high waters at.
It's not written right.
That's, uh, yeah, it's 305.3.
Oh, I was gonna say, I was like.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's shown correctly, it's labeled incorrectly. So it shows the bottom of the bed at 30873 and 3.4 feet to 305.3, which is deep test hole 10171, which is. I would listen to the lot.
What is it, it's at 30?
305. And the bottom of your system is at 308.73?
Right.
All right, so you've got more than three feet of separation to that. The one thing I will say, with sea soils typically, when they're not that well draining typically, if you're gonna do a porous pavement, you should have an under drain or like an upper drain, kind of put it at the top to allow, and I don't know if it's feasible here, to daylight it somewhere. But that will allow, so stuff doesn't bubble up at all, you know, if you have a really large.
You know, I, I thought about some kind of overflow device for this, but, you know, since we were kind of attenuating the storm. And then if you look at the, at the profile, I mean, the real, the pinch point is, is here.
Yeah, you could do it right at 310, I don't know if you could have like a four inch pipe, just kind of come out. And I don't know if it could daylight, you know, I mean, that would be the one question. If it can't daylight, then I wouldn't suggest doing it. But by doing that, you won't have anything potentially ponding on the.
I, I think you could put something at the top of the large stone bed, the reservoir.
That's exactly what you're saying, yeah, just do right at the very top, do the four inch. Do like a four inch perforated pipe and just discharge it out. So that way during really large events, if it fills up, it's not gonna come up through the surface, it's gonna just go out.
There's no incline that way or it discharges too.
Well, I, I know what she's saying, I mean, it's something that is certainly reasonable to consider, yeah. I, I, I really don't disagree with that.
It's mainly just because when you have sea soils, you're, you know, they're, as you noted, it's, you know, 0.17 inches per hour. It's.
Yeah, and that's why, you know, I, I looked at the bed in terms of not having any exfiltration. And it's still containing the volume of the entire storm. So I was satisfied that it, that it would function, it's not in the water table and it, and it has the storage volume without any drainage. But then you get to the point where you get an event, and access to that, what happens? I mean, you know, to fill it beyond the pavement top and then it really is just going to act like a broad weir, you know?
Yeah, it's just you hate to have water sit on the top of that type of surface if possible. And, and normally it would never do that because its intent is just to go through, but if there's a way to.
I just think if it ever has exceeded in that regard, we're gonna be in a flood situation and it's gonna interwo.
Correct, well, that's true, that could be, that could be true.
At least, I guess that would be a, a way to drain.
It's really difficult, if you can't get it to daylight, then I would say that's fine. My other question is maintenance. So obviously with this being porous pavement, it has different maintenance than regular pavement. Are the owners willing to use a vacuum sweeper or maintain this, a certain?
Yeah, I mean, it, it needs to be maintained with, with vacuum sweeping, at least annually.
Yeah, like at least once a year.
Twice a year, once a year.
I mean, it's residential, so it's certainly not like it's.
Yeah, and I, and that, and that should be included in the.
Or else it loses its.
What's that?
Or else it's not, it's porous.
Well, no, you're gonna get fines, you're gonna get fines that are gonna go in there just from, I mean, one, you shouldn't sand it, but there's just from your trucks, you know, your car is going up and down. So the way, you can't sweep it like you, you normally would. So you would just have a vacuum throw up, it takes the lines out and it keeps those voids open so that the water can get through. I mean, you could do nothing and it will still be maintained, it will still work like a paved driveway, but then you're gonna eventually fill all those voids and it's gonna act like a paved driveway, you know? And, and not have any storm, you won't have, I mean, it takes a while to have that happen, so. But the intent here, I think, is to maintain the stormwater BNP. So that would be part of the, the maintenance for that?
Yeah, and I mean, I've seen long-term studies on these, I, I've designed them, I did a road in Acton and it's been in service for five years and it's serving three lots. It, it works, it still works and they made, it has a maintenance contract, they sweep it every year. But with this type of pavement, you know, you just don't get, the, the water doesn't sit on it.
No, and that's the nice thing, is you don't need to sand it, salt it.
Water disappears into the pavement, so it really, you know.
Doesn't ice up?
It doesn't ice up, you don't really need to sand it or salt it. And especially since it's got no grade to it out here.
Yeah, you definitely don't want to, I mean, I would almost say, make sure you don't sand it, I mean.
Yeah.
And, and I would highly think that the Conco would not want you salting it within those resource areas. But again, I don't think you really need to just because it doesn't sit on the surface.
That probably will be a prohibition in the order of conditions with them. I, I, I don't think it would be needed out here.
Yeah.
Plowing and maybe a little sand.
So by switching, Danielle, by switching to that previous pavement, that prevents any concern about runoff to dam flood? Up to some.
Yeah, so basically what they're showing, what they're basically is doing is there, any of that impervious area, it's gonna go straight down and, you know, underneath into this reservoir and it will slowly infiltrate up. And there's a sand, the only thing I was gonna say is, and you do have a filter course, all right.
Yeah.
The only other question is, in your calculations, your detail, you're, you're saying it's a 12 inch stone reservoir?
Yeah.
But your calculations are using, looks like 18 inches? You go from 308.54 to 310?
Yeah, but it peaks below that, I, I just added, it's just an added level of the storage.
Okay, so you're like, you're like 309.68.
I didn't know when I, when I ran the storm whether I had enough and I get frustrated with the calculation errors. So I just stack it up and see where it peaks and what I need to do to. So if you look at the, at the stage storage or does it show the peak elevation?
Yes, it's 309.68, so it's almost right around.
Yeah, which, which brings you right to, you know, 309.73, yeah. So I actually worked back at, from the peak from that.
And I see that you've got this going straight across, so that is good. So basically, you're not even taking credit for the little bit of the crown over there.
Yeah, so there's another, there's an additional two, two and a half inches of crown, right, that.
And you're using a void of 35%.
Oh, come on.
All right, we'll go with that.
Erica, can you give us on the common driveway?
One of the three, the stone is, is.
I know, it's, if it's between 30 and 40.
On the common driveway bylaw, you know, so do we just take into account the driveway or do we take into account the whole development, you know?
Well, like Mark was saying earlier, the common driveway provides access to the lots. There is a section in the bylaw that talks about, you know, when deciding whether or not to grant the special permit to create the common driveway, the planning board should take into consideration the following. And like I highlighted before, one of those items is the environmental impact on wetlands and water resource areas. So I think out of respect of all the wetland resource areas on this property, the, the board should be looking at, this is my opinion, the board should be looking at it as, as a development.
Yeah, but yeah.
Stating.
Jake Foot, 40 Century Mill Road, I'm gonna flutter. I stated at the, at the last meeting, I have a concern, the driveway is gonna get elevated. And I don't know how many people in the room here have seen the video of the water where it starts. Yeah, it starts at one stream, goes right across the driveway, the whole plain is basically one contiguous body of water. I've been there 22 years and I've seen it happen five, probably five times, six times. So it's not an infrequent event, it's not just once every hundred years. So my concern is if the driveway is elevated, is that gonna act like a dam and push water back onto me?
Well, how much, it's not actually, it's not that elevated.
Really elevated, yeah, I mean.
In some areas it is, but in some areas it's not.
It's not, it's not substantial, I mean, we're talking three inches, five inches.
What's this, so this is?
I mean, in one sense there.
They're gonna scale on.
Yeah, 10.
By them doing the porous pavement, they are providing a lot more storage, stormwater wise, than the original swales that they were proposing along the driveway.
That's not, oh, I'm sorry.
No, so I was just gonna say, so they, what they're proposing is can take more.
Yeah.
Run, so if you have those storms, anything that's gonna hit this driveway is not gonna go off. It's gonna go straight, it's gonna go straight in. Literally when you, I don't know if you've ever seen the porous pavement, but you can take a slab of it and put it under a sink and the water will go straight through.
You know, I, I, my, I have my bachelor's of degrees in civil engineering.
Oh, okay, so.
I've worked heavy construction and installed this many, many times, porous pavement in parking lots and in cities and different situations where they can't run pipes for whatever reason. It's a maintenance nightmare, it plugs up with the.
Well, that's, yes.
Yeah, but the bigger, the bigger problem in this situation is you're gonna take a vast amount of water, capture it and inject it back into the ground, which is going to alter your groundwater elevation for all your septic systems. You're recharging your groundwater.
But you're, you're also, you're also, I mean, there's a certain amount that's infiltrating right now.
Well, a lot of it, a lot of it now is just shedding. It goes from one stream through the woods, across the driveway, and it continues to run to that smaller stream. I don't know what the name of it is.
I mean, I can tell, just at least from the studies I've done, I mean, stormwater, subsurface stormwater BNP's are not gonna alter your groundwater elevation, I mean, those are historic elevations, I mean, they're.
Yeah.
It would take substantial, at least that's what I would.
It's not like you said, the only time that, you know, it wouldn't work is when the whole area is completely flooded, then it just doesn't matter.
Well, that's, yeah, I mean, that would be a concern though for other septic systems. I mean, if that, that area, I mean, you certainly don't want your septic systems flooding.
No, I mean, I'm just looking at, I was glad that you, you, you got the chance to see the water and the amount of water and the area that it covers.
I'm still not sure where that video was looking to.
That's lots.
And where.
First lot.
Did you take the video?
I did.
Can you show us exactly where you took it and what, what direction you were in?
Let me see. So I was standing here and I shot down here, you can see the water in one of the videos running along this wall. And then I shot, you know, across here like this. And a lot of the video was shot over here and substantial portion of, you know, along this, what's called an old stone culvert. But substantial parts of that were just completely flooded.
What's the bottom of your septic system for that lot three that's in that kind of area?
Also, what's the basement level?
The basement level's above groundwater.
So it's like a raised up?
Yeah, well, we've got 314 over the pump box, so probably, we were at 305. The bottom level of the, of the septic system is at 309 and a half.
So groundwater is 305, what's the hundred year floodplain at?
310.
And what's the basement at?
I don't know off the top of my head.
So you're.
I might have the septic plant looking.
So the bottom of your septic is below the 100. So the bottom of the septic, what'd you say it was?
No, 310 is the hundred year flood elevation and 39 is bottom of the septic.
That, that, I mean, that's irrelevant, it's not continuous floodplain though, I mean, basically you've got.
Right, yeah, you have a dam.
Yeah, I mean, so you've got areas that are, that are higher than, adjacent to, not, you're not executing.
So what's, what's the high, what's the high point between here, here, what's this, 311?
Yeah, well, this existing 310 and then the, it, it doesn't really hit 311 existing, it's 310 change.
It's not like it's going up to 314 and then coming back down or anything.
Well, it, it's going up to 314 here around the.
Yeah, but not over here where the septic is.
The, the top of concrete is probably about 316 in the, in the basement floor is probably 308.
So the floor is 308?
I'm guessing, just based upon this contour, but yeah, I mean, based on the, the septic system. So the, we would've set the sill based on, on, actually out here, based on the water table, I'm setting the basement floor where I think it, it shouldn't be any lower than, which is probably 308, 309.
I mean, what I, what I kind of get concerned about is the, you know, questionable of whether we should or not, is, you know, if we kind of okay this and then these people's basement always flooded and they come to us, you know, why did you approve this common driveway when you knew it was, you know, the basement's gonna be flooding and, you know, the septic's gonna.
Well, I mean, with respect to design of the lots, I mean, that's something we give consideration to. I mean, you've got a septic system that's being elevated substantially, right? Because of estimated seasonal high water and offset to that plus the depth of the system and the filter grades.
So how high is this mound?
This, uh, well, it's probably, uh, it's about four and a half feet in the area of the septic tank.
So it's 314?
Two and a half, three feet, like right here in the middle. And it's about four feet there, two feet there. You know, it's not tremendous amount of fill, but it is more important to get these basement floors above estimated seasonal high water and then deal with the aesthetic of it with fill rather than, you know, the alternative, you know?
So you're saying you need to get it up higher than 308?
Oh, no, I, I think it's fine at, at 308.
But so, I'm sorry, what's that, 308, I missed that?
The basement floor.
The basement floor.
The basement's at 308?
Yeah, we have groundwater at 305 and a halfish.
If your flood elevation, which has a 1% chance of happening every year, is 310. So you've got basements that are below that and you have a septic system.
We have basements that, that are below that, but the adjacent grade, there's adjacent grade between the flood zone and those areas.
Yeah, well, that doesn't matter, I mean, the floods, I mean, the elevation, I mean, are, are you, you're saying you're creating a dam around this?
Well, you're, you're not, you're not adding to the flood zone, you're, you're digging down adjacent to it, so it's not.
But if the ground gets saturated, it doesn't matter.
Well, that's why groundwater elevation is the important factor, not where the floodplain elevation is.
One other thing that should be looked at is, I believe that this pond surface elevation's about, when I can see, 308, 309?
See that water elevation?
Right, just, just looking at it. So I would think the groundwater is in that, looking at it in here, is in that vicinity of elevation. I'm looking back at the driveway on our houses.
Is that pond, that pond, is that elevation on 308?
Well, looking at the contours, you get 310 and nothing else.
The, the elevations stop at the wetland flag, so that's just the edge of the pond that they locate.
And that elevation should be shown in the water.
These are, these are contours, this is.
No, I'm not saying it's contours, but the only thing I see is 30, 310, I thought I saw 309.
Well, I know, and we put one footers on here, we still don't have a lot of topography to look at.
But then if it was 305, we'd have more contours.
Yeah. Yeah.
So I'm just saying, if that pond's at 308 plus...
It's not that high, I don't think. I mean, the, the edge of wet is at 309-ish, that pond's down, you could...
Okay, well, I think it should be shown and get the elevation up, and then give us an idea on groundwater also.
So on lots four and two, if the veronal pools are determined to be true, do you have area to redo this and move this around, or you pretty much lost those lots?
I can only design with the constraints I have, and I don't know what those constraints would be. I mean, if we look at the low contour here, these two areas were in the veronal pools and you had 100-foot offset to those areas, as well as this buffer zone.
And you lose your entire block.
This buffer zone, well, I mean, I think both, I think lots two and four would be in jeopardy if that were the case, so.
Yeah, I mean...
That's why, you know, we, when we start the process, first thing we did was have the resource areas.
No, I understand, but now you're kind of on hold on lots two and four anyway.
Well, it's a surprise to me, because I, we were pretty, you know, adamant that we really defined all the resource areas, floodplain, wetlands, riverfront, et cetera, before we even...
But it sounds like you're on hold, so if you're on hold with two and four, I'm almost inclined for us to wait for that to be settled, though. I don't see the need to rush into approving the common driveway if you can't build the lots anyway, personally.
I think we all have concern about lot three.
Yeah, for sure, yeah, yeah.
Could the area that you videoed, how often does that happen?
I've seen it happen three or four times in the 20-plus years that I've...
It's probably his, you know, it happens with five.
For different reasons. You know, we can have a really, really heavy rain, and that might have been one of these 100-year events.
Yeah.
But the other thing is ice from Danforth Brook jams up underneath the bridge under Century Mill Road, and there's literally no place for the water to go. And it just, it can be a torn across my, across my property, and that's after running through a stone wall.
So Erica, is it official with Concom that they're in a holding pattern for the veronal pools to the spring?
I can, I haven't asked that.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's official, it's, we're having discussions about, about it, you know, whether or not the, the ANR is adequate or not. And even so, you know, the questions that have been brought up, you know, nothing is...
Yeah, I understand your point, but, but I don't, I also don't understand the point of approving this common driveway if those aren't going to be approved anyway, so like, kind of what's the point? So I almost would at least like to wait until everything's official with, if it's on hold or not, until the spring.
I'm, Matt, excuse me, sir, I didn't mean to interrupt you. May I ask a question? And so, it would be out of the question for us to just present a backland lot special permit for lot one, with remaining land at this point, and, and reserve what easement we think we'll need, well, actually, we don't need to reserve any, I mean, just preserve an easement for lot, lot one over its existing driveway. And then we could separate this and, and continue.
So what are you saying, just do the backland lot?
Just separate lot one and, and not do the division.
So permission's just given A and R?
Well, be a backland lot special permit, so.
And then you have the driveway on another lot, I mean, is that...
Well, I mean, that's, that's the nature of a common driveway.
Well, it's not a common driveway though, no, right? If you're asking us to do the backland lot now, then your driveway's coming through a different lot, and it's not officially a common driveway, does that make sense to do, Erica? Am I thinking about this wrong?
I mean, typically, when someone's requesting a backland lot with this type of subdivision, they come forward with a common driveway at the same time.
Yeah.
So...
Which we have.
Right, I mean, they would even revise A and R plan that shows what Scott's, you know, proposing with, with an easement for that driveway entrance.
Yeah, they would need an easement to your lots.
They'd definitely need an easement, yeah.
Theoretically, there wouldn't be any driveway design.
Well, right, because it's...
Well, no, yeah, it would just be a backland.
But he would need the easement, right, right, but you know, drive knows would be just an A and R.
Yeah, it would be an A and R with an easement for the existing driveway, yeah.
I mean, and Matt, at least we could...
I mean, yeah.
Forward somewhat with this without resolving any of the rest of it.
There's just, you know, too much in the air, I feel, for us to, you know, be, that's how I feel, I don't know, maybe the rest of the board could weigh in, but between the flood zone of lot three and still waiting on the veronal pools for lots two and four, I just don't see the point of us plowing ahead with a common driveway. I don't know what everybody else thinks.
I'm, I'm okay with that approach, I guess, the two comments I would just say is, I appreciate you actually looking for a low-impact development technique and using porous asphalt, I think it's, it's always tough to find where you can use that, but I think this is a good way to kind of limit your impacts, and this is one area, given the flooding, that I, I looked at your calc, you know, are not only meeting peak rates, but you're reducing peak volumes, and that's a key component, I think, because that goes to that flooding, so you, you're meeting that, so I, I like that, and I think that's...
I think it's a good application in this case with...
That does sound, that is good, yeah, I agree with that.
But what I am concerned about, I would just ask is, and I don't know on the Board of Health with regard to the septic system, if you can just check that, if any component of that can be below your, your flood elevation, so I would just ask to check that and see if there's, just along those lines, the concern of lot, I'm specifically just talking about lot three.
Yeah, the regulation is, you can't, you can't place, you can't in the flood zone.
Okay, I think, but given that it's elevation...
Yeah, yeah, I don't, I don't think that would qualify in these cases, you're separated by land that's above the flood zone, but we can, we can inquire the board.
Yeah, I would just, I would want to look at that a little bit more carefully, but, I mean, I'm still okay with, you know, being a little bit on hold with just all of the questions, but I just wanted to kind of make those two comments.
Yeah, I do, I appreciate the, the change in the driveway, you know, definitely improved.
I think it's a very good...
I improved the runoff into the Danforth Brook, which I think has solved that problem, but this is still the issue with, I would like at least to know from Concom if they're holding to the spring or not before we made a decision.
Yeah, so I would like to continue here until we resolve.
I'm not going to close it, I'll continue.
Yeah, that's fine.
But I can make one more comment, so if we can, maybe you can help me figure out how to move forward with what Mr. Hayes was talking about earlier with that lot one being able to be...
I think you just need to, you just need to come with an A and R backland lot plan.
Yeah, and we don't even need to, we don't even need to consider the remaining land available lot, we can just say, so lay not to be considered available lot, whatever the area is, it is.
Yeah, right, you could keep the driveway as is.
Yeah, and that, and that would at least free up lot one, you know, for, for purposes of the applicant.
Well, I mean, there's already a house there though, so, I don't know why you'd...
Well, they want to sell it, right?
Oh, you could just sell it and not worry about the land, you know, selling it or estate planning or something like that.
Basically, basically, yeah.
Which, you know, it's not preferable, I mean, I'd rather it was all approved before.
The only thing, the only...
Because they're the furthest down the line of the driveway, so they're going to be affected by construction.
The only thing you would need is just an easement.
Yeah, yeah, and we could do, we could cover that on the A and R as well, so, so then we'd want, yeah, keep our backland lot and common driveway special permit hearings open for now, and then we'll have another meeting with Conservation, perhaps at the next meeting I'll present that, and we'll withdraw our common driveway.
I would just like other, other things to be settled before we, before we wrap up. It just doesn't make sense in my mind to wrap up here.
Well, yeah, so let's see how it plays out with Conservation, and then we can decide at the next meeting.
But can that be acted on even with what we have before them now, the backland lot piece?
Well, we need to come with a plan specifically.
Yeah, they, well, they, yeah, they need, they can't act on a plan they don't have, I mean, yeah, they have a plan of lot one as a backland lot, which you requested a special permit for, but not exclusive of lot one, it's a division of the 12 acres, so we need to show it has a division.
So is that a new special permit, or could they come back?
No, 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 they aren't, we are...
They can do it as part of this.
Right, so we've already opened hearing for the backland lot.
So we just need to be planned for that?
We just need a modified plan for them.
Right.
So we don't need to wait a month or anything?
No, not, not for the backland lot.
Yeah.
All right, well, that's helpful.
So you can come in the next meeting. But when do we expect, when, when does Conservation expect to?
I don't know when their next meeting is, I, I figure they cover second or third.
I think it's next, it's next, it's next Tuesday.
Yeah, I think it's on the second.
So our next meeting's the 10th.
So we can continue this to the 10th, and it can be a short one, if we're just doing the A and R?
Yeah.
Scott, so at this point then, should, I shouldn't be advertising for the scenic road hearing, because I was going to do that either tomorrow or early next week, to get that going, but if...
You could always do it and not have lots at expense.
Lots at expense, and then...
Then you have to show a plan that's capable of moving themselves.
Yeah. I mean, we're not hearing at next meeting, so...
Yeah, I don't know, I, if we're gonna...
It's your call.
I'd say, but let's not, let's not advertise it now, but let's leave it on the table.
Because I wouldn't, all right, because I wouldn't even be able to get it scheduled for the next meeting, it would be the meeting after that at this point, so...
Well, I think at the next meeting we'll know how to handle that as well as everything else once we have a meeting.
You probably have a week to decide, what, that it, advertise a lot?
Uh, yeah, I had to get in my head, I needed to get in by Wednesday next week.
Yeah, so you have by Wednesday to decide if you want to advertise for...
The scenic road, which would get you on the, the last meeting in October 24.
So you have a week to decide.
So, not by, by 10, 3, 4, 10?
10, 24. So it's really, it's really the end of business on Tuesday, because I need to get it to the paper by 10 o'clock on Wednesday, so...
So 10, 2, okay, so you have to 10, 2 to decide on time.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
As a, I don't know if we can continue it up, but, so, is, am I thinking of it rightly or not rightly that the driveway application, I mean, I read through the bylaws, it talks about the specific requirements for the driveway, it's the width of the driveway, the safety of it, the drainage, the, you know, the trees, the, you know, you know, visibility, there's all these criteria, surfacing lots, the lots have to be created based on, you know, upland area ratios, wetland ratios, et cetera, and if it meets all of that, right, and the driveway itself is considered environmentally sensitive to the design because there's no wetland impacts, no floodplain impacts, et cetera, and we're approving it because of the drainage, can't that be an isolated question from, from the, from the veronal pool discussion?
I think what Erica read though was the overall development has to not have an environmental impact, could you reread that sentence, Erica?
When deciding whether or not to grant special permit to create, to create a common driveway, the planning board should consider, and there's a less, one of the items, the environmental impact on wetlands and water resource areas.
So if I look at, so I, I have that section here in front of me, so it, it follows is a list of about 20 things of the details of how to design a driveway, and then it listed, but there's five things, and if you list them on the wall, the way I read them, they're all very specific to a driveway. So number one is the safety of the common driveway as designed for normal use, I think, I've heard that it was designed in a safe manner. Number two, the safety of the intersection of the townway, and that's very specific to a driveway. Number three was the adequacy of the legal agreements for maintenance and access, that's also very specific to the driveway and the easement agreements. Number four, adequacy of the common driveway to provide access to vehicles carrying materials which are potentially hazardous, spilled, such as home heating oil. Again, it's an access issue specifically for a driveway, and number five is the environmental impact on wetlands or water resource areas, again, handled by the Conservation Commission, but since the whole pattern here is everything is specific to the driveway, none of these things talk about septic systems and grading out of lots and stuff like that.
Do you want to force us to vote on it tonight?
No, I'm just trying to help, I'm trying to understand if, if there's a separation or...
We are, we are planning, and we're trying to understand the entire scope of the project, so... Right, and we're not closing anything, we're just waiting for other things to solidify, so I don't see the point of rushing our decision when you potentially have a long pull over the spring to even need a common driveway, so. I don't feel like us holding off is holding the development up at all. If, if you're looking for estate planning or whatever, it makes total sense to do the backland lot, but I don't feel like by us pushing off the common driveway is holding up the development as a whole, considering it could potentially be waiting until April anyway. Can we continue here? Yeah, I will, we continue the hearing to October 10th at, Erica, 7:30?
Yes.
At 7:30.
Yay.
On favor?
And when do you need that additional information by, for the...
Next meeting, what additional information, the easement?
Hammerhead lot, is one of these paper copies mine?
Um...
The milers here and...
Typically, it's just the miler that is your copy, but...
Well, I don't need it, I, you know, I'll take my word on it if I tell them I got signed, so.
Yeah, so the next meeting, you guys can come forward with the, with the backland lot.
You guys didn't open us up for the audience, I did have a question.
Well, we'll have to take this up next one.
Yes.
Well, yeah, we're, we're still continuing, sorry.
Okay, that's not...
You can email any questions and we'll get them, email them to Erica if you want us to get them ahead of time.
Great.
And actually, we might have a better answer for that.
Yeah. So Erica, what is your email?
It's townplanner@townofbolton.com.
Yeah, sorry about that, but we're already getting high schedule, we're a little long.
Interesting.
All right, so moving on here. So, next up, George B. Kurtsey, Squire, Carcel 6018 dot one, Green Road. Paul's acre property owner seeks to withdraw his property of 2.5 acres from chapter 61A. Planning board needs to provide comments to the board's selectment as hard as Bolton's rate of first refusal. So yeah, attorney's not here for this, sorry.
Yeah, I wasn't sure whether or not, I said, said his attorney.
So I was looking at the, the map, and I don't understand the lot being only 200 acres, it looks a lot bigger than 200 acres, the parcel, I was confused by it.
Oh, really?
It's because it's that little cornfield on the corner.
Well, no, it's, so there's, he owns two properties.
Maybe I was confused which one it was, I don't know.
Yeah.
Is it the cornfield?
I'm pretty much sure, to be honest with you, I'm pretty sure by it. If they're not, you know, we're supposed to... Yes, this was a request from board's selectmen, not from the applicant, so they're likely to remove the 2.5 acre version of the chapter list, so in order to do that, the board's likely have to act on their right of first refusal, so essentially all the board has to do is say, no, we're not going to actually purchase the property, or potentially we can...
We did the same thing for North Road.
Oh, it's really, that's all straightforward.
How would we know if the town wants to buy it?
Because why would you want to buy this, it's 2.5 acres, and by residential lots.
Yeah, if it was by another conservation land or something, it might, it might be a different story, or, or, you know, abiding in the high school where you want to, or something like that.
Or a larger person.
Yeah, yeah.
If it's taken then I can see...
Coming up Harvard, going into Harvard, left on the green, and it's just that field that's like a mine every single day.
Yeah, I know, I do too, but, so, oh, is there a line? I'm seeing, it doesn't show that line, you're showing there. I'm sure exactly, so one end is blank.
It might be bad.
Oh, it gets cut off on that one.
Yeah, it doesn't show it.
Yeah, so it comes up.
Oh, yeah, maybe, because this is 1.5 acres.
Yeah, so it comes up, this end of the label is 22 dot one, this is...
That must be the line.
There's a line in this, so, so that's the line.
This is the first one here, this is more than his house, there's a discontinued way between the two, so that's maybe confusing as well.
Yeah.
His driveway, I think, comes in along this discontinued way.
What does that mean, discontinued way?
So back in the 50s, they redesigned Hartford Road, and so they discontinued that portion of Hartford Road when they did the, when they did the improvements.
So the house is going to go right in there on that corner?
No, I think the house is a triangle.
Well, you're saying they're gonna, are they gonna, someone's gonna build a house here, is that the point?
Oh, um...
Probably.
Oh, um, yeah, I didn't expect that.
Oh, so this, this triangle is part of it?
No, it's two separate, it's two separate, but I'm just saying he owns four parts of it. And it may be confusing when you're out there, it's two and a half acres, okay.
So this is the triangle part here.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see any benefit to town from buying it.
No. Yeah, surrounded by residential.
Yeah.
It's not contiguous to any conservation.
Yeah.
It's not like it's a, what's the one on Old Bay Road?
There's no scenic vistas.
It's not like a scenic vista, yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's nice, well, I love, I love that idea. Okay.
Anything from the audience, sir?
No, well, I mean, anybody have any comments? So it pretty much would just, the planning board is just telling the selectmen, we're not interested, we don't see a reason to purchase it.
Do we need to make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll move that we inform the selectmen that we are, that the planning board has no interest in parcel sixty eighteen A coming out of, sixty-one A.
All second?
All in favor?
All right.
Fred? Andy? All right, so let's start with the potential even one. All right, so let's start with the cul-de-sac.
What would you like to know?
So...
Looks like the wrong file got forwarded to you. This is the one from Brandon, most recently I had multiple editions, so I'm sorry about that.
What were we looking for addition from the last, from the last meeting?
I think it's just a file, just a part of it, it's not a file. Wasn't that it?
I need the official plan.
This is not really all I have on file, you forwarded me a sketch, so that's what I have.
So this is the official plan, though?
So Erica, have you received this?
No, I haven't received that.
Yeah, I looked at the file that I sent you today when I printed it off, and it was the previous version of Brandon. So this one is the one Fred had looked at previously.
So Fred reviewed this?
Fred's looked at it. With regards to it, though, it would require us getting the property lines shifted like we talked about last time.
So we don't want to just do an easement part, you want to actually change the property line?
I don't think they want to, but if that, I mean, the whole point of the cul-de-sac is that if that becomes permanent, and I don't think you want a town road on a...
Makes sense, yeah, because you want the roadway to extend.
Yeah, right, exactly.
So are the owners, are they selling backland, how does that work?
Well, we have exhausted every option to get them to either deed the land that would be deeded back after the road continued forward, which we discussed last time we were here.
Yeah.
Swapping lots with other lot owners to somebody that was amenable to deed the land, or even we proposed we had a buyer that was willing to buy the lots from them to allow us to get some consent done. All have been refused and are not going to happen in a short timeframe.
We have no solutions, basically?
We have no solutions at this moment.
Great. So, can you do an easement, is that, that goes back to the...
They need to agree to that too, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so there, that's not...
So, so I'm here, it's the ones that are labeled Weiss or the ones that aren't amenable, or...
Which ones, which ones Weiss?
Name's Weisman.
They're actually right there, sorry.
This is David Weisman and Sam Weisman.
So you guys are not, not for this?
Which, sorry.
The veteran or...
This is the cul-de-sac to move the...
Right.
Town of, yeah.
So, it was recently presented to us and it's going to be on our land, and our feeling is that it doesn't benefit the land that's being put on, but rather benefits the phases two and phase four. So, our feeling is why, why should it be put on our land? Why can't it be put on phase two or four?
Well, if you guys ever finish a road, then it could be removed and, you know...
Right, and so, well, as, when we were here several months ago, you know, that was brought up. It was our opinion that it was never our responsibility to build the road, and so that's like an internal dispute that we've been having, obviously, which I'm sure you've heard about.
Yeah, so now you're not, and you're actually going out to bid for a road?
Well, no, so since that meeting, now we've been investigating that, but again, so we kind of came online with that only, you know, several months back, despite the fact that this, the project has been going on for ten years plus or something like that, so, I mean...
I mean, you're going to be building in that phase three, once you like have a town-accepted road leading up to your phase. I mean, by not allowing that to be built there, you're pretty much having a private road to your spot permanently.
Right, so, and of course, that's not what we're trying to do.
I understand, but that's what's happening. I mean, if there's a clause in the agreement, I mean, I'm not trying to pressure you or anything, but if there was a clause in the agreement where everything goes back to how it was, you know, once you finish your road, I don't see the issue.
I guess we're not, well, so we're not that sophisticated with, you know, building roads and...
We're not sophisticated.
Yeah, right, turnaround and all this, this is all brand new to us, right? And I know that there's something, some stuff involved with, you know, once the turnaround goes in and how the water comes off and what the expense of putting in the turnaround and then taking that out again to finish the road, so it seemed to us like, you know, the easement for the space is one thing. And if it goes in and then is going to come out, and I don't know, that's one thing, but then in addition, the expense of, now, you know, we've always maintained it was never our responsibility to build the road in the first place, but if this thing gets put in phase three, obviously, you know, other parties have been saying that is our responsibility to pay for it. Now, if the, if the turnaround goes in, in phase three, there's an argument then that we have to pay for it to go in, we need to then pay for it to be taken out and then continue the road, so... My impression is any expense that would be to pay for the turnaround itself would be better spent just paying for part of the road to be built, right? Because there's, now there's wasted money going in, you know, putting it in, taking it out, and then continuing the building of the, what would ultimately be the permanent road.
Fred, can I ask you a question? So, they have to put a proper base down and everything on the turnaround. Would that still be good? You know, if you have to rip up some of the turnaround and then to build the permanent road through, would the base need to be redone, or...
No, the base would still be fine. Technically, the pavement, the twenty-four feet wide of pavement.
Yeah, so I mean, you're doing work that needs to be done.
So...
And all the, whatever has to be built under the regular, under the design plans now, to whatever point is proposed to be built would have to be installed. They're proposing to change the drainage slightly, that would then be put in that way, the way they're proposing, and we qualify that by saying Brandon stores more detail to put on the plan. But then, wouldn't have to change the drainage. The only thing that would change technically is to cut off the round parts of it and put a curb straight through. But, the base talking about an easement, and just be aware, that turnaround is not going to be an easement. It's land that the town will own. With the turnaround, the hundred and sixteen, hundred and twenty-eight foot diameter, the town will own that. It goes onto whatever parts of your lots.
As part of the road acceptance going before town meeting, Erica, could we have a clause in there that if phase three gets built, we would turn back over, you know, the part, the edges of the round? So, would that have to go in the, the bylaw?
There would have to be something in the article because that would be the intent, so, yeah, there would have to be language in there.
Yeah, so we would have language in there saying that, you know, we don't take, we don't want a little round edge, you know? You know, you can have it back.
But also, A and R plan is going to have to be redone and changed the lots.
Yeah, to...
Yeah.
Because those lots, you got to look at it as it is, a permanent turnaround and that's it. And so that's the new property line, the hole would be the new property line, so, for...
So how does the, um...
So can I just add to that one, one thing? So, yeah, A and R plan, and then the board also needs to weigh in what type of modification this is for the subdivision plan itself. Does this a major modification that requires a public hearing? If this is going to be, I mean, technically, this could be the finished road, right? So, you know, the board should weigh in, does this require a public hearing or not? Wait, I'm sorry.
She's saying, is this a minor modification, or should it require a public hearing?
So the way that subdivision control law reads is that all provisions of the subdivision control law relating to the submission and approval of a definitive subdivision plan shall so far as passed be applicable to a modification, amendment, or rescission of a definitive subdivision plan. The planning board should proceed according to all procedures that should be followed when originally approving a definitive subdivision plan, so essentially it's saying if you're doing a modification, you need to follow the same requirements, so that would be a public hearing.
But if it's a minor modification?
Yeah, so in the past, there's been minor changes, like landscaping to the cul-de-sac, we've considered that a minor modification, but in this instances, instance where there are various owners, there are residents that'll be impacted, there'll be abutters that are impacted, should this be a public hearing?
But we know that the majority of all the owners on that road are in favor of this.
Correct.
So I mean, procedural, if we do that, I guess, although now it sounds like there's a debate about whether it can even happen, so that's...
But if we do, if we do the hearing, then you're really running out of time to get it paved, right?
I just want to make sure that the board is following the right...
Yeah, I mean, I would still look at this as a minor modification. I mean, the road is still in the same place. It's, you know, the intent there is just to provide a turnaround where, in the event that this couldn't completely be built, but there's not much change other than, you know, I think, you know, if that wasn't to go, to go forward, but...
It also wasn't that the plans did show a cul-de-sac in that same area.
Yeah, yeah.
And the drainage structures that would be installed here at the end, that, they're removing it farther, but it would be a permanent drainage structure.
So it could, okay, so the drainage structures could stay, so to your questions as to the concern about putting something in that's going to have to be ripped out, I mean, the intent would be, is anything that's kind of a straight portion of the roadway would be there permanently, like any drainage structures, let me know if I'm saying anything incorrectly. But what would need to be ripped up is these side portions of just pavement. So, you know, this whole portion could stay and remain, so you're actually still billing, you're putting that money towards the part of the road.
And even where the soles drainage area is here is in line with the current drain line, so this, this stone drain to help filter the water is in the exact place that the drain line from this catch basin would be going to this drainage hole.
But that will have to be removed, Fred, because that's going to be...
The stone hole, right?
No, because that's going to be perforated pipe.
Oh, that line.
So from that manhole down, add it to what you just said, Danielle.
Yeah.
From that manhole downstream where the stone is would be removed.
Okay.
How long of a pipe?
Fifty, twenty-five?
Like thirty, I was gonna say, like thirty, yeah.
Twenty-five, is it, I forget?
That's a perforated pipe? What do you think that's cost, fifty, twenty-five for a perforated pipe?
Yeah.
I'm just saying...
No, no, I took, no, I'm asking you for fair price.
I'm just saying, I'm just correcting Danielle on what has to be done.
Yeah, I didn't see the structures down below that.
I just wanted, I'm trying to...
That's between you and him.
No, no.
Give me actually tips, so, the extension of the road and the cul-de-sac you're putting is going in at your expense. Is that correct? Or who's paying for that? Are you paying for the turnaround, or are you saying you're not paying for the turnaround?
Agreement, even though they say it's not, I'm happy to show you the agreement. It's not a very complicated agreement, and it's written in plain English.
So you're saying you're not paying for the turnaround?
I'm not building their, their road for free. No.
I think this is kind of part of the fundamental...
I'm happy to show you the agreement, it's one, I mean, the paragraph on this is very, very simple, so I really don't, you know, it's... In your mind right now, it's, gee, I don't know who's telling the truth, but so I'd be happy to show you.
I read the agreement, I read what you sent us, at least.
I don't, did I, on the day I was sent it?
It was last year.
Year or year.
I think there was something that you sent us.
So, the agreement basically, it's crystal clear.
Andy, if, if they could give you access to do it, and you just build that extra, you couldn't build that extra fifty feet as part of what you get the turnaround going, can we like meet in the middle so my head? Is there some kind of agreement you can do?
I think, I think I would do it, because my agreement just says...
You think you would build the turnaround?
I would build it because my agreement says that if we do work on that site building the road, we send them a bill and it's due in thirty days, that's what it says, so I'm happy to go do the work. Unfortunately, you know, they still owe us the money for the, you know, the other people, they're not the only ones who own lots in that phase.
Yep.
You have National Lumber and also Christine Palmer. So when we built, when we did the work, you know, cutting the trees, pulling the stumps, all the work that's been done to date, we sent bills to the other people that own lots, they paid.
Yep.
And they have the, it's the same agreement.
So I don't, you're confusing me.
What I'm saying is, I will do it because I'm going to build the other people.
But that's not, that's not...
You're saying you're going to do it, but you're going to build them, that's what you're saying?
Yes, I'm going to build them.
Well, then that's not what Eric was asking, he was asking you.
I'm going to do the work.
Yeah.
No, but there's...
I'm not going to, you're saying that you want me to do the work and not build them, even though I'm entitled to be able to build them?
That's exactly what we're asking, is would you be willing to pay for this with some sort of agreement of getting the property, basically, so that we could move forward with this?
Or some type of...
I'm under no obligation, right, to do free work for people, isn't that a little crazy, ask me?
They're giving you the ability to build your turnaround on their land.
It's not my turnaround.
If you want the road's accepted.
I understand, but it's, I don't do work for free for people, I'm sorry. I mean, if you, I don't think anybody can afford to...
Well, I mean, it sounds like, you know, there's nothing to talk about here, huh?
I understand, but don't blame me.
Right, right.
I have, I have an agreement that says...
You guys want the road to be accepted.
And they're supposed to pay me to put the road here.
This needs to happen, it's, it's up to you guys to figure out how to do it.
It will happen.
There's no agreement where, you know...
They're in violation of the agreement.
You can't like pay for it now and sell it to them after, or something?
I can pay, I'm...
Building now?
I'm willing to do the work, I'm going to send them a bill. It's now up to them to say...
A bill for material and labor, or a bill to...
A bill for building the road, for that section of road, why would I improve their land for free? I'm happy to go do the work, and they're refusing to pay me, I hear it. I'm still going to send a bill, and then I can try to collect, so I'm willing to lay out the money, which I think is pretty damn nice of me, to go do work when somebody's, I know, refusing to pay me. But to say I can't send a bill...
But you also need their agreement to change the lot lines.
I don't need their agreement.
I, I think you guys are understanding our position, though, which is that it's going to be on our land, we don't have a need for the turnaround, and so, and by putting it in phase three, it's continuing this argument that we have to pay for it.
I think you're missing the real point here. They have an obligation to build that road under the terms of my agreement with them when I tell them to. They're in the middle of my development, I'm not that stupid to sell somebody lots in the middle of my development and then say, you don't have to have it put in the road, and I got land on the other side. They're in violation of their agreement.
So whether we are or not, we have issues about the validity of that agreement, and that's where this all comes down.
Andy, go, don't give them a free road, no, I'm not doing people...
I don't know, Andy, I don't know, I don't know what to say.
Oh, you don't have to say anything. Unfortunately, the road won't be accepted this year, and I'm out of patience with them. I mean, I've...
Could we not, you know, I understand that point, you know, I don't know when they're going to build it or what they're going to do, but can you not draft up an agreement where they'll agree to buy that paper now, off you? I understand you're putting money...
No, because I'm going to get, you know, why are you asking me, right? To do work for free for somebody, it's their land.
Right, exactly, they're agreeing to let you build something that you need to...
I don't need it, what do I need it for?
Your residents need an accepted road, no?
They'll get an accepted road, but unfortunately, right now, the people who are responsible for putting in the road, they've been responsible for it for over four years now, and have been shirked their responsibility. They haven't paid me for the road. and, and have been shirked their responsibility, they haven't paid me for the road work.
I'm asking you guys to meet in the middle, it doesn't sound like you're meeting in the middle to me.
I just said I'm willing to do the work
So you're willing?
and lay out my money.
Okay, but you're gonna build.
Not their money.
You're gonna build them?
Of course I'm gonna build them.
What are you risking though, you're not risking anything?
What about the cost of building the road, you want me to, you want me to spend a hundred thousand dollars building a road and not build somebody?
This circle's gonna cost a hundred thousand dollars?
It's two hundred fifty feet approximately.
I don't understand why you would even suggest that I should go and prove somebody else's land and do it for free. When they, when I have an agreement that says they should have put the road in four years ago when I told them to.
Okay.
They put up a bond with the town or they take their bond.
Let's not talk about it anymore.
Okay, I'm sorry, but I, I.
You guys need, if there's some agreement you can come up with, then come back before us.
I understand, no, I don't think there's any agreement we're gonna come up with, I think that it's gonna have to be decided elsewhere.
Okay.
We're in, we'll continue to talk to them and try and figure something else, but we're running out of time.
Unfortunately, I would like, we're all set to go do all the work in the entire subdivision. I don't know what more I can do, I've offered to, I've got somebody that would buy the land, I've got, they, they could just trade lots with somebody else.
Erica, we don't have any.
I mean, I don't know what to say.
I mean, that turnaround has to go in phase three, in order to accept the road, the road has to be how it will be to the edge of the line, right?
I, I don't know that.
The only other thought I had, no, it won't work, I already thought about it and I thought it through.
Well, the only thing, only thing was if we put the turnaround in phase two, but.
I was thinking that, is that not?
That's a problem.
I mean, I thought this, we don't have.
I mean, we got the same issue with people already own the lots, we happen to need us, so we have to do it.
Yeah, but at least it's just in your phase.
If you, if you, the only way I think would be to, I think the remaining two possibilities that I'm aware of are further down the way, there were lots on, yeah, a little bit further down, there were two lots that are owned by National Lumber.
Okay.
And if we could fit the cul-de-sac in
Down there.
down there, then.
Probably have to shift this way a little bit because this is a one acre exact line, so it has to.
But I'd like to fit it in.
Are they willing to pay?
Oh, I'm sure they would, yeah.
Pay for the road?
They already have paid for it.
They paid for it.
No, no, but I'm talking about Weissman, you have to go through their land.
I know, I said I would, I'm willing to do the work, right, and build them, which means I'm not gonna get paid.
Well, it doesn't sound like they're willing to build the road right now, that's what I'm taking, right?
We only need them to put the cul-de-sac here.
Yeah, so if, if the cul-de-sac were to move and maybe be down here, then there's no land taking that would need to happen from these three parcels, which is Weissman.
So who's gonna pay for the road here?
I said I would pay for the road, I will lay out the money for the road and I will worry about collecting it, that's how crystal clear my agreement is with them. I'm not worried about collecting the money.
You only need to get the land.
But I can't do the work if they don't give me the area of land. Okay, how much farther down is that? How much farther down is it?
It, it, this is what, two fifty, so it's about another hundred feet?
Not even, it's this lot right here.
Oh, it's this lot right here, okay, so you could just move this down and then have the cul-de-sac, so instead of the cul-de-sac being in the middle, it's gonna be offset, but it doesn't matter as long as it's still.
Eventually, the world will get built.
I have no problem with that.
With all things being said.
I can't force them.
Can Brandon look at this?
On the, on the cul-de-sac. We go further down, we're taking the drainage and that has to go to a basin.
Well, we're talking about the lot that the cul-de-sac's already have on and where the stone drainage.
Whatever, whatever has to be done, don't disregard that we just end that, if it takes up some of the drainage pipes, they have to go get on, get treated, controlled, whatever the terminology is, so there might be something still off the road, might be that next detention basin or portion of whatever, foot and night and work that, some of those things.
If, how soon do you think Brandon, Brandon's hoping to.
That's the other problem we have, we're running out of
Time.
building days, because, because this hasn't been settled, this piece, the cul-de-sac piece, we haven't been able to sign the contract to do the top coat paving and the other work, because unless we have this cul-de-sac, we're not gonna have the roads accepted, which, you know, I understand, you know, the people that are sort of losing out are the residents, okay, I would like to have the road accepted, I'm trying, I'm doing the most I can do.
Well, I don't think we have an issue with you pushing it further up, you know, if you're, if you're, you're still gonna have to collect money.
Have it, have that work.
I'm gonna collect it from National and I'm collecting from Christine Palmer.
Realist.
They just haven't paid, so, you know, they haven't done what they were supposed to do, they have the same agreement.
Yeah, I mean, just see, see, he's just saying the timing, our next meeting's in two weeks, so, I mean, we'd like to get, can we get a plan with them?
I mean, we can get your plan in two weeks.
Probably have a plan tomorrow, probably, okay?
Okay.
Is there any?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
I think two weeks, we're gonna run out of time, we will be, that's how.
I don't see it.
Tight we are.
There's no hearing for, well, okay, are we saying there's still a minor modification?
Yeah, the board, well, the board hasn't voted, but it sounds like you're.
I'm, I'm gonna agree with it, it's a minor modification, I don't know if others have a different.
But I'm saying. You know, to make it possible, I wouldn't mind if we had a fifteen minute meeting, you know.
Can we, can we do that?
Sure, the board can either.
So if you were to.
Sorry.
I wouldn't mind doing it.
If you were to use plan this week, today's Wednesday, you know, something that.
Coming in for fifteen minutes, twenty minutes, just to approve the plan.
Just, I wanna make you aware of my own personal circumstances, I have no use for my heavy equipment right now and I have people right now unless this thing is gets
Give us the plan, Andy, give us the plan.
I'm lying a very.
We need, we need forty-eight hours to call a meeting, so you tell us when you'll have the plan and we'll schedule a meeting.
It's starting nice of you, well, I appreciate that, I mean, I would like to, I would like to get this done, but I
Yeah.
I need an.
Give us a plan.
Dude, is it worth talking about the bond, is that the?
I mean, if we have any shot, we might as well get it discussed a little bit here.
Yeah. Because there's, there's no way that we're releasing the bond before the road's accepted.
Oh, well, that's.
I don't, how can we release the bond before the road's accepted?
Well, just for the same way that you release it as we complete work, it's, it's why, basically, if you aren't willing to accept it and you release money, you're changing the procedure, because the current procedure is as we do work, we get a bond reduction. So if the top coat's on the road,
Yeah.
we're entitled to.
But what happens if the road fails over the winter?
It's, it's really talking, really almost about an impossibility, the base coat.
That's what the bond is for, for impossibilities.
No, no. The base coat of that road has been there, the road, whatever it's, and I think really the person really, I'm gonna say it and then give you an opportunity to speak, but the, 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 the road, as far as where it is located, it's not shifting anymore, it's been there for seven years, it's been driven on. When you put the top coat on, I mean, what people are concerned about with roads is not necessarily the top coat, it's the road shifting, which is why people wait a year.
Andy, if we give you the bond before, the residents are screwed and we're screwed.
I think you're, I, I respectfully am telling you that the normal procedure, right, is as we do work, the bond gets reduced, that's how it's always done.
Well, right, but the final pave, the final layer, the work isn't complete until it makes it through the winter.
That's fine, but you don't have to keep the whole thing, I mean, what do you think, the entire drops, you're gonna have.
Well, we can maybe get.
Corinne's gonna be there watching the pavement go down.
The binder's down, right, the binder's been down for years.
But there's some places the binder's getting replaced.
Right.
So that, those, you know.
But the gravel's not getting replaced, what's underneath it is solid, we're not, we're not, so that's.
Fred and Erica, can you guys speak on this topic a little bit?
On the binder, some portions are getting replaced.
Well, I'm talking about the bond, what are your thoughts on that?
Going back to the binder, we left a percentage once the binder was down in case there's issues in the future and there are some, whether it's enough, it doesn't, that's not the point, so it could be a percentage is still left for the top.
So will we release a certain portion after completed, but hold that still?
We released, I want to, I think we kept ten percent or something like that, or twenty, not even twenty, I don't believe.
It was ten.
But, ten.
I think it was ten.
Which, which, you gotta remember, I'm not saying this negatively, but you expect that once the binder was down for the year, the top course was going on, this binder's been down for longer and what has happened, some other things that have happened where they had to make cuts across the road to put in, to fix something or whatever, so there's patches, so it's a little more because of the time period. It probably should have, knowing that, if it was gonna be, it might have held a little more, so getting back to what we probably would, I would recommend that we hold back some, let's say the top course is a hundred thousand, that we hold back ten thousand for repairs or something like that.
It's not like you need to hold.
Right.
And I would just also recommend holding some back just because of, you know, temperatures and stuff and you wanna see that, but I, I don't think we should hold.
I need more.
Well, I mean, like, like the berms, the drainage ponds or whatever, I mean, we still have bonds on that stuff.
Right.
But I think, you know, to the point of, I mean, we do, you know, when they, if the work is done, some portions should be released.
What did we do in Northwoods?
I, I don't even recall.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna ask Erica the same question, but I don't think she, she was here, she wasn't here probably.
I was here when we placed it on the warrant for, for road acceptance, I think at that point the bond had already been released, but I can, I can go back and look and see what the timeframe was.
I mean, road acceptance is not really even the standard of construction, road acceptance is a, by the town.
Well, I understand, but it's still.
We're talking about the standard of construction.
But Fred.
Town voted not to accept the road?
Yeah, but we do a review, a review of the road, like the month before it goes on the town meeting, right, Fred?
Sure.
And if there was some issues with it.
Oh, I understand, that's why you, you might wanna hold some, but.
We might wanna hold some.
But, but if the town didn't vote to accept the road, we would be doing money back anyway.
That's true.
I mean, just like they've done the binder.
I just want some, some insurance, I understand. If there's some damage, because, you know.
I understand.
Yeah, and we, we need to keep some, we need to keep some amount, we'll need to figure out what that is.
It's great.
And see what historically we've done and maybe that in the, that we hold, you know, something until spring and it's.
I mean, just keep in mind, that money I needed to pay people.
Can you, it's no different than you're building a house and you're paying as electric as being done plumbing and so forth. At the end, you might hold a certain portion for three, four, or five months in case you saw out some flaws or whatever. So it's still almost the same thing, you're still paying as you go along.
Was there?
Think of the bond as a payment.
So in this bond, what do you think we should hold, Fred, what do you think we should hold back?
I mean, I don't. I have to, I'm not gonna comment on it at right this moment, we'll have to look at it, like, I don't even remember what's on, there's there's certain things, one of them is raising all the drainage structures, so that's gonna get done and not change at all. So that would be theoretically hundred percent whatever's left there.
Could you have, by the next meeting, could you all worked up what we would and what it would least of the bond?
It'd be just, it'd be, it's one of two things, we release what they did or just keep a percentage.
Well, I guess I'm just trying to determine what percentage we would keep through the winter.
I would say ten percent of the top cost.
Ten percent?
What is that, top cost, I don't remember, should we have any of the top of it?
Sixty, is it?
Ninety thousand?
It was sixty-two, sixty-two thousand.
Oh, so, yeah, so there's multiple pages to.
Yeah, there's.
So ten percent of the total top coat?
Possibly, I don't think about it, but.
But also curving too, I think that's a percentage of the curving, because that's gonna get damaged.
We gotta talk about that.
The curving is gonna get damaged, why do we not think so, it's damage again?
So it sounds like, so, so it sounds like we'd be open.
Just based on prior experience.
Oh, well, we're not gonna have any construction vehicles on the road.
Through the winter, you're gonna have your houses done?
We're all done.
Are you done?
Seated.
Okay, well, maybe that's something we could look at first.
So it sounds like we'll have some percentage, you know, you won't get it all, a chunk of it.
Andy, I still need funds for, for Friday night as well, okay?
I should be able to do that maybe even tomorrow.
So, get us the new plan for the, for that.
You're willing to have this, this meeting, as we.
Yeah.
We just don't have the time to, we're running out of time.
We just need forty-eight hours, you get us the plan and we'll schedule a meeting, or even if you say it's.
I'm not even a hundred percent sure of it.
Yeah.
You have a location, we'll work.
Yeah, you gotta, yeah, talk to Brandon, so, so just talk to Brandon and then get back to us as soon as you think you'll have a plan and then.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, talk to him, see what he says, and, you know, he needs a couple of days, we could, we're meeting early next week.
Yeah.
If the road's done a hundred percent, any lots that have frontage on that road, I know that the people are gonna expect to have released from, from the government.
Standing.
Any lots that have a road in front of it that is one hundred percent complete done, they're gonna expect not to, to have to be able to build houses on it.
In, in phase three, yeah.
Yep.
So you're saying they're not gonna have, not, you don't want them to have the right to build the house now?
No, no, we don't.
No, no, we.
Oh, you wouldn't.
They'll never, they'll never pay if they, if the road's a hundred percent done.
So the covenant needs to be updated, you're saying?
No, they just have to have a.
It's just one lot, I mean, this is the only lot.
One, two, three, four, five lots that we have frontage in front of, because frontage ends here right now. We've got this cul-de-sac in here, this lot would have it, this lot would have it, that one.
If the road's a hundred percent done and it's top coat and
Finished road.
Finished a hundred percent.
Yeah.
If I want to build it. They have to be able to build.
Yeah.
I mean, I need to be able to explain this, they have to be able to build and I, and if the road's a hundred percent done, they're not gonna wanna put up any bond money.
Okay, we have a lot more to talk about, so.
Just quickly, Eric, there has to be some, I have to say it too before you guys. Given the conditions, of course you know that, but that would be the A and R of those lots that might change too.
Okay.
Yeah.
To show me that.
But the.
Is there any flexibility on this cul-de-sac, like, yeah, the size of it?
The size of it?
I think this, I think this is, this is the size that we, that was run by the fire department.
And it's shrunk down from.
It, it has shrunk, but it's, I don't think we go any smaller, just because if it ends up being permanent, this is the size that the fire department signed off of, so I don't think we can go any smaller.
Did you guys?
I see a jig foot Century Mall Road, is there any plan to finish from this proposed cul-de-sac to come out onto Century Mall Road?
I mean, well, eventually it'll go out to Century Mall, that's the plan, that's the plan.
You mean where the ride faces?
Is it, is it sold or to a different developer or is there any time?
You still own that, so?
Yeah, okay, so we're moving on, we have a huge.
Eric, did you wanna set a, set a date or we'll do that via email? Via email.
Yeah, that's fine. Thank you, guys.
Pretty cool, we'll do it.
It was fun. All right.
Good night.
Thank you, guys. Robert Pace Keith Farm, took the way in and were going to remove all the shade trees, conducted as part of the construction of Keith Farm, suffered a no fire consent. What did you do?
Again, I think we talked about this already once.
I heard that you were statistically told not to remove the trees and you removed the trees.
No, this is what happened, okay, if you look at the subdivision plan, subdivision plan itself that everybody signed off on, it has a sightline distance, they actually have the trees on the plant, okay. I actually, we had a pre-qual meeting, we said we're gonna cut these trees, nobody gave a second thought because notice seen a road. I even asked Brandon Duke Dushan, who's not here tonight, but he go, okay, you know, can we need a hearing? No, it's not, it's seen a road, so the trees get cut.
Everyone agreed.
So that's, that's the abbreviated history.
Yes.
Okay. There were three trees left and the trees are gone at this point, the trees are this big now, okay, so mark, mark the trees, okay, no, no, no pun intended, and the, the tree cutter, one of them was right behind all the stumps, they were gonna try to grind, okay, okay to grind the stump stump and in his infinite wisdom cuts the tree down, no, not only does he cut the tree down, and I'm. And in his infinite wisdom, cuts the tree down. No, not only does he cut the tree down, and I'm telling you, it's that big if it, I, I was gonna bring it in. And.
It's a four inch oak.
Right, right. He, he leaves the tree right there with the sign on. Like, really? Okay, so I, I met with Mark last Monday night, I think. Okay, it was last week. And I said, I hope you don't think that, you know, I did this just to aggravate anybody, okay? It, it was a mistake. And it, it would have to come down to grind the stump. That doesn't mean that we're just running roughshod here and doing whatever we want. So I, I actually brought the road builder in to the meeting with Mark. And I said, I'm not gonna get all of that. You get, you get all of that. So that's the story behind the story.
Mark, you wanna tell us?
Is there anything different to the story?
So whenever we hold them, I think where the confusion came in, Bob, I should either mention it, do I need a scenic road hearing? No, you do not need a scenic road hearing. But when we hold a scenic road hearing for trees, we're also holding a Massachusetts shade tree hearing. So it's a joint hearing. So didn't follow Massachusetts general law. August twenty, I can't remember the exact date. It was either August twenty fourth or the twenty seventh. The tree cutters came in and cut six large pine trees that are on, Bob mentioned, they're in the sightline, they're on the plan. The plan also clearly shows the lot lines. So we know that those trees aren't on Bob's property. We know these trees are on the town property.
They were beautiful trees. I love them.
So.
Were those in line, line of sight?
Yeah, in line of sight.
They were marked to be cut on the plans, right?
I never.
There were X's all over.
There was X's on the trees, but.
Had you defined?
I did not define it because it was under bond funding. So Erica went out and put a cease and desist on the tree cutting. There was, they removed six large pines. The last tree was partially cut at that point. And between Erica and the police officer that went with it, they both determined, I was out of town at the time, they both determined that it was a potential hazard to leave the rest of the tree. So they allowed them to remove the rest of that tree and the small three trees that we've talked about remained. Which put us to a public hearing on September twelfth. In the interim, sometime between September ninth and tenth, that four inch oak tree got cut. So.
Just, just one of the three?
Just one. So there was already a cease and desist, no more work on that. Let's go ahead now. So under Mass general law, as a tree warden, I'm looking at it as two separate, two separate timings. So August twenty fourth to twenty seventh, no public hearing, maximum fine five hundred dollars. Sometime between September ninth and tenth, trees have posted signs on them, tree gets cut. Another, another fine should be applied to that. Then we also talked about what we should be doing moving forward to reestablish some trees. Obviously, they can't be in the sightlines and Erica and I talked, I also called some nurseries to find out what size trees would be available at this time of year. So we would be asking Bob to plant ten trees, five green mountain maples and five red oaks of three and a half to four inch caliber. So it's the size of the tree of the last tree that was removed without hearing before.
Would you be asking for that as part of the shade tree hearing anyway, replacing trees?
I, we, sometimes when we, sometimes when we have an applicant ask to remove a tree, we ask them to either healthy tree, we ask them for funds to put a tree somewhere else perhaps. I'd like to see these trees back on this particular property.
Inside?
Inside. I'm not sure, I'm not privy to the plan, but I know that some drainage work and stuff is happening if you face the property on the right hand side, closer to Hudson. I don't know if that was gonna allow for some planting there, but I think, you know, my initial intent would be that it'd be ten trees of two different species of, you know, of sizable caliber. And that they would be planted by no later than May first and that they would be warranted for three years. Maybe my suggestion. Any, any, any nursery that you buy wholesale from guarantees the tree, the plant material for one year. So we're basically asking for two years to make sure that they are fully established. They may go through drought or whatever, but that they're, you know, in place and, and healthy and well.
What was the size caliber you were suggesting?
Three and a half to four.
It wasn't a four.
So that's instead of the fine or along with the fine?
Along with the fine.
Yeah, I think he says there's two fines.
Two, two five hundreds?
And ten trees.
Are you agreeable to this or not agreeable to this?
Well, we can go after triple damages, which you can't go after triple fines, but you can go after triple damages. So.
What are your estimated on the damages of?
Well, you can start taking six large thirty inch plus pines in a landscape, in a landscape setting is way more than ten trees.
I, I think that, I understand there should be some trees, okay? I think ten is excessive.
You cut six already.
No, but, but, but I think they were, I, I think there was an extenuating circumstance here. You can look at the plans it signed off on. We had a meeting. We've marked the trees. Okay, we didn't just do this to, you know, make everybody mad, okay? I came in here the last time, it's all coming back. I suggested the same thing. I think anytime there's a subdivision that needs trees down for sightline, that should be part of your regulations, okay, in order to have that site meeting prior to to signing off on a subdivision. Because theoretically, you approved a subdivision that couldn't be built without, okay.
Well, with an additional hearing.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, 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 right.
That Brandon should have known about.
Right, well, well, right. And, you know, I mean, I don't think that that should cost me, you know, five thousand, seven thousand dollars, okay? Because that's what that'll cost, okay, at the end of this. And, and I do think it's innocent. Okay, I think, I, I don't wanna use the word shared responsibility. I'm the developer, I'm responsible. I'll go on record saying that, okay? But there's certainly some extenuating circumstances here.
What, how many trees are you proposing that you would be?
I think five, you know, normal sized maples. I think three and a half, four inch, okay, is, 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 those are expensive trees. We, okay, as everybody knows here, we're doing the, the, okay, the rehab of the, okay, existing house.
Here.
We, ironically, all that scrub and everything else, and everybody's driven by there, we've cut those trees down just so you can see the house. Okay, so we're gonna put ten trees there, I think is, is, you know, okay, is excessive. And, and, and every year, I think Hudson Hot Power and Light, okay, had an issue with those trees. They, they were very large, okay, and, 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 you know, I mean, okay, again, I'm, I'm, I'm throwing myself on the sword. Okay, I'm asking for some leniency because there's, there's some extenuating circumstances.
Mark, you, I mean, I mean, we're really talking procedural here, because they were gonna be removed, right? They were gonna have to. And you would have potentially requested some replacement trees for them to be removed as part of it?
Correct.
Can we?
I didn't think ten trees was, was a crazy request.
Yeah, and I would not negotiate, I would not negotiate on that either. I would require the ten trees because the, the second incident was, was willingly cut down. I mean, I specifically went down there with a police officer.
I, I.
I, I was very clear about that those three trees needed to remain and the fact that it was posted and then cut, to me is, there's, there's no excuse for that.
So, so Mark, if it just been the six pines, would you still be looking for the ten trees or would you be looking for something less than that or different? We would, basically at this point, we'd remove one four inch oak. In the big picture, it's not a big deal.
Okay.
So I would still be looking for a, a, a large, a large number of trees.
Let me make an, let me make an offer, okay? Let me put six trees in and there's no fine.
I think the first fine, we'd be okay, or I'd be okay with.
I think there was genuine confusion.
I agree on, on all parts. The, the second fine, no.
Yeah, one, one fine and six trees?
Done.
So that was the rest of the board thing. Hold on one second. One fine and six trees?
So three maples and three red oaks. I like the idea of mixing it up a little, not doing all the exact same.
And I agree with Mike, the, the first one, maybe an understandable miscommunication, but get your guy.
Although it sounds like Mark would have gone for, for close to ten.
Yeah, I just.
Of the first, I mean, I, I.
We should go with the tree warden, with Erica's.
I still, six isn't enough.
I mean, they're cutting, they're cutting down ten, why not put ten back?
I, I mean, I'd waive the first fine and then keep the ten.
So the five hundred and the ten?
Five hundred and the ten. I know it's not what you wanna hear.
Other comments? I have Joe Drellup from Bonner Row in Bolton.
Yeah.
And my thing is that this, it happens all the time with mistakes of builders or whatever. So I think you should keep the fines with him, because that shows precedent down the road that he's involved in another project in town that he's had fines against on previous project. I'm concerned with the project on Silver River Road actually, that he's part of with David Russell.
Oh, we'll talk about that afterwards.
So I want the fines to be on this project to show that there's a precedent of fines with these builders, that they, they promised everything, they said they were doing it the right way, but things happen, like with the mitigation with the, with the stormwater drains and things and infiltration and oversized system for designs, you know, wetlands. And they say it's all gonna be fine, but this is an example of things that go wrong. Once the trees are cut, they're gone. Once the system is installed and the new building is done over Silver River Road, that's done.
Okay.
Damage done afterwards is irrevocable, like the trees are gone.
I understand what you're coming from, but.
Okay, so I want, I want the fines to be shown, to show precedence down the road on other projects that he works on in town and he's been fined for things, by not doing things properly. So I think the fine should stand for precedent.
Can we just go around the table and kind of state what you think?
Don't start with me.
I've already said.
I'm still.
The same one, one fine, ten trees?
Yeah, I agree, one fine, ten trees.
I think it should be two fines and ten trees. I mean, I think we've been very flexible and we need to.
One fine, ten trees. I do think we've been flexible and I'm, you know, I don't think there was malice the first time.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I mean, you, you got bad information from Brandon on that one. Which, it does happen, the engineers screwed up on that one. The ten trees is a pretty hefty bill in and of itself, so.
But the whole conversation always happens with these people. They come in and they say, well.
All right, let's.
It's close enough.
I don't want to hear that these people, you know, let's take it down a notch.
Builders come in, in a lot of conversation we've had with other lots, it's been, yeah, well, it's close enough, it's just a little bit bigger. Yeah, I talked to certain people over here, fine.
He's been, he's been working very well with the town. He's working, he's working affordable, I mean, yeah, I was saying, so.
I, I agree with your comment that we should go with what the tree warden says.
Actually, what?
Uh, the ten trees.
Wholesale, wholesale prices on the ten trees is like thirty five.
I'm okay with disregarding the first one.
Just a couple of comments?
I would like the tree warden to select the trees.
Oh, at the nursery?
Yeah. So he's getting exactly the species that he thinks is most appropriate for, for Bolton.
Okay, did that all happen?
Well, I mean, I mean, yeah, whether he wants to specify the, the species or actually going to pick the.
The quality.
The specimens, but I mean, it's gotta be a three year guarantee, so.
I don't wanna see Norway maples planted.
No, no.
That's my point.
So Anastasia Downey, Silver River Road, I just, point of clarification, I wanna make sure I heard this correctly. There were, there was a tree that accidentally started getting cut down. And then you came out with a police officer and said, wait, stop, we're not supposed to cut these trees. Of which there was more than that one that was, I guess, halfway cut down?
So they had already cut five. They were in the process of cutting the six.
Oh.
And because in talking with the tree cutter, it was a public safety.
Yeah, that it needed to come down so that it wouldn't fall itself down. So, but then after that, there were three additional trees?
There was three small additional trees, three.
Three trees to be posted.
Three trees to be posted and one got cut.
Okay.
And, and it was actually right next to the other tree. So just so you know, it was.
Right, that was hitting ground with a stump grinder.
Even on the, on the, on the, the excavator spot, I mean, his thing was, you know, I'm coming in to grind the stump down now, okay? Okay, it was, it was touching the tree, so, you know.
But I didn't think you were supposed to be doing anything.
Right, there was already a cease and desist, that's what I'm trying to get.
Anyway, so, which is why you were saying keep the fine on that one.
I'm not suggesting.
So there was a cease and desist and just, again, just clarification, there was a cease and desist and work was done on top of that cease and desist. Am I understanding?
It sounds like you would have been okay to grind, am I correct?
No, no.
No, that means stop work. Yeah, that's what, okay, thank you.
Hi, I'm Wendy Kelly on Danforth Lane, and I want to speak up for the residents there that the Saturday construction is really a nuisance. We are closing our windows. We can still hear the noise right through. Every, every person I've spoken to in that area complains. Not all of them have emailed, others have emailed and given up because I figured there's no response from the board on, on riposte.
We have, we've seen maybe one or two emails. Erica, is there any emails we haven't gotten?
Not recently. We.
How many do you need to see?
I think, I think we've seen one is all I'm saying. You're just saying many, we've received many emails that we haven't responded to, which isn't true, is all I'm saying.
Okay.
And I, I think the first email we received was after this hearing closed two weeks ago. So we unfortunately, it might have been, but I think we, we didn't get it till after last hearing, so it was too late to do anything.
My, my only question to Erica was, I just don't want you to throw out there that we're receiving all these emails that we're ignoring. We haven't received any emails.
Um, the earlier Saturday request.
Yeah, so there were, there were two Saturday requests. The first one we received, and this is when they were doing the tree clearing, so it was pretty noisy out there. We had received two emails.
Yeah.
In which the board said, okay, preliminarily, we'll give you two Saturdays to see how, to see if we get any complaints. We didn't receive anything in that timeframe. So then when we had the second meeting, I didn't have anything new for you.
Yeah.
But since then, we've received.
And since then, we've received.
Wendy's, yeah.
Okay, but do we wanna stick?
Yeah, we'll get back, let's, yeah, let's, the trees. We'll get back to that. But it sounds like we're sticking with, I mean, we'll have to vote, but I guess Tree One wants ten, Erica wants ten, so we'll stick with that. And we're between one or two fines.
I said one fine.
One fine?
You said one.
One fine.
I'm good with one because the first one was, does kind of sound like it was a misunderstanding, so I think, do we have to make a motion? Vote on this, like, still vote on the fine? The fine being, we're saying, instead of two fines, we're saying one fine and then the ten trees. Planted with a three year warranty by when? May first?
May first.
You want, you don't wanna plant it now, right?
Problem is, I've already checked with three of the local wholesale nurseries and no trees, because they dig trees as, they, they don't wanna hold them over larger caliber trees throughout the winter. So they won't be digging any until spring of the.
So these can't be planted till spring?
Planting right now is another ideal time. We have a lot of available water. However, the three nurseries that I checked with that I deal with quite frequently don't have those size trees in stock.
When's the earliest it should be planted? Half to the last frost or whatever?
The earliest?
Meaning, how late, how late in the season?
Or how early in the season?
How early next season?
As, as soon as the frost leaves.
Yeah, so sometime between last frost and May first, that's what we're saying?
And we've got a pretty good window there. I mean, there's.
It's usually like end of, end of March, I think, usually, depending on the winter.
Depending on the winters.
That sounds like.
And Mark, are you selecting the trees? Is that gonna be part of the vote?
We've had great success with cultivating our, of green, it's called green mountain maple. We planted them here in town. And obviously, the red oaks do well as well. And the reason I also chose the red oak is it was a red oak of four inch caliber that got cut. So I'd like to see something go back into its place. We're closest as it can. So I'd like to see something go back into place where it's closest as it can.
All right, let's hear a motion.
Go for it.
I make a motion to disregard the first fine, but to keep the second fine that the warden has noted and to require planting of five Green Mountain Maples and five red oaks that are three and a half inch to four inch caliber that will be planted no later than May first and have a, I thought it was a two-year warranty?
Three.
Three, he's asked for, okay, a three-year warranty.
Second.
For the favor?
Aye.
All right, that's settled. Saturdays. How many more Saturdays you got to go?
Up until November seven.
So it's like five more Saturdays?
Yeah, something like that.
This is a lovely time of year. It's really.
Just FYI.
Are they sticking to the, are they sticking to the hours, nine to three?
Absolutely. And just FYI, there was a person that stopped from Danforth. Mark was there, okay? We joked about it. We said, so, okay, has there been any disturbance here? No, I don't hear it. There's nothing. So, you know, you don't even have, okay, we're not in their backyard. Okay, and it goes up like this.
We can see the construction.
You have to direct the comments to me.
Okay, excuse me.
But, okay, Mark was there and that, that occurred, okay, so. You know, I mean, it's not everybody on Danforth that is doing this. And again, the board understands, just like they do with Andy, okay, that, you know, we have a limited window, okay, to get this road done. Okay, and, you know, the rain we're getting and everything else has been, not, not been cooperating. So I respectfully ask that we continue and, you know, let's, let's just see, see where it goes.
Do you anticipate needing to do any work on Saturdays, say, after the road is done next year, construction, anything else?
The only thing that we never did, we never framed, okay, on Saturday, okay, but, you know, okay, even at Century Mills, you know, they worked inside the houses and that was never an issue. With anybody there, okay, that's, that's, that's what I would anticipate again.
Want something to say? I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's difficult to go outdoors because of the construction noise. Anytime the vehicle reverses, it goes, I mean, I'm fairly close. I was shocked that a whole section over between thirty and forty on Danforth Lane can still hear that construction noise. I don't know where this person was from. There are other shared drives that go.
Yeah, I don't even remember his name. Do you remember?
But at that, at that point, correct me if I'm wrong, but you'd only work one Saturday at that point, September 12th?
Yeah.
So you'd only had work on Saturday?
No, we actually worked right before that, didn't we?
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
It was either one or two, but he definitely said he didn't hear anything, but he may not have been home on Saturdays or whatever.
As a matter of fact, he said, I go in and out and, yeah.
Okay.
Jake Foot, Century Mill Road. I'm not sure, Robert, did you build the two houses?
I did.
Paul Stacey. I'm just gonna speak, I work in heavy construction, so I know what it's like to be up against rain and everything else. I'm gonna tell you something. I got woken up one morning, a Sunday morning, and it was a logging company. They went down Century Mill and loaded logs on a Sunday morning.
I don't, when, last year?
When those houses were being built. The logs were piled up and the truck came down the road and I thought to myself, I said, this is ridiculous. It's, it's our home. I work in construction. I know what it's like. I wouldn't cut grass on a Sunday.
This is the first of yours.
Interrupting my neighbors, but just so we're, we're all in the one room here. Your projects do work on weekends, on Sundays.
Well, I'm not there, so.
I understand that.
We're not directing somebody to go.
I'm gonna direct my comment to the board. For the record, I'm telling you as a taxpayer, and I'm telling you as a neighbor, to this gentleman's projects, they have worked Sundays. He may not have known about it. I suggest he politely suggests, he has good communication with the subcontractors. He lets them know that the abunders, the neighbors, are paying attention and they do not like getting woken up on a Sunday morning.
Why don't we put a sign up, okay, that has the hours of operation, okay, so?
That doesn't stop the noise from coming down here on a weekend. I have a family.
I didn't say it does.
Doesn't you like to get outside and it's, it's more than a nuisance.
I sympathize with you, but, you know, I guess my question is, would you prefer for him to work a few more hours every afternoon? Or extend the work out into next spring to get, finish up the year? The work, you know, he's got a certain number of hours of work that need to get done. So. Where, where, where's gonna happen? So, do you want it on Saturdays for the next month and then he's done with Saturdays? Do you want it extra hours every night? Do you want it, you know?
I think.
I'm, you know, the answer is.
Nine to five, but I, you know, they're working longer than that already.
Right.
So I don't.
Yeah, but that's not real in construction.
It's real in a workday life.
Yeah, yeah, but that's not.
It's the rule. Is there a rule on it?
Yeah.
Do you have construction hours?
Yeah.
And we reduce the hours on Saturdays.
Seven to five is the rule?
Yeah, yeah, and it's nine to three.
Nine to three is what we do on Saturday. So you're not getting woken up early. You shouldn't be.
No, but we can't enjoy our weekend. And we don't get anything out of this subdivision. Why, why are we suffering for this?
Can we, so is it six more Saturdays?
Yep.
Can we take like two Saturdays out? Like, no?
Really? Okay.
I don't know, I'm just saying.
I'm, I'm, I'm trying to hot talk the road before the fifteenth.
Excuse me?
Okay.
It is inescapable, that sound?
Again, I mean, he's trying to get the work done, so I understand. What time, what time we stop and work on, we stop and work on what, five o'clock during the week?
Yeah. And, and, and the guys kind of work more than that, okay, they just don't work any more than that.
We couldn't go to six?
No, okay, it's, we're getting close back at six now. It's crazy, isn't it?
What time is it? Seven to five or is it?
Seven to five, okay, and, and I don't know when Eastern daylight time or whatever it is.
It's not in November, so you're fine until then.
My wife and I were just, we were eating dinner before I came here, okay?
No, it hasn't.
It's, it's, it's six thirty, it's almost back.
No, the only thought of if it went to six was, I mean, you're allowing you six hours.
To do it.
You couldn't get the, because it's six hours on Saturday, you'd have five extra hours during the week. It almost cuts it so you don't have to work on Saturday.
What if, what if we just shifted it like ten to four? I mean, see a little bit more of a quieter morning?
I don't.
That's, that's nothing. I'm just trying to.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm well aware, but I, I respectfully am asking that we continue and, you know, I mean, if there's something. You know, we're not blasting, we're not, you know.
Yeah, the thing with Century Mill was, I mean, that's like, was gonna be going on for years, you know? This sounds like we're gonna be done in six weeks.
Were you intending on working October sixth?
I don't know that. It's up to the road contractor. Okay, probably not.
Yeah, it's a holiday weekend.
Probably not. But, but, but I don't want to say that, okay, and then have them show up and then you'll say, we'll see.
How about we take out Columbus weekend?
I think that's very reasonable to take that.
Is Columbus Day a federal holiday? Because that's the way in the condition and the permit rates. If it is a federal holiday, they won't be allowed to work on Monday.
Can we just, can we, I don't think.
I'm pretty sure.
Can we take one Saturday out just to give them a break?
How about November seventh?
Set the last Saturday?
I think it's.
A holiday weekend?
Holler, sooner.
It's a holiday weekend?
Yeah. I'd prefer a sooner weekend when the weather's nicer and we're likely to be outside.
We're asking for a Saturday and a holiday weekend for no construction is reasonable. And, I mean, you're.
And we try to, I think we asked for that anyway. We said no holidays, right? No holiday weekends?
I don't, I don't think.
I, I, I often add for, for.
I think we, I think they were.
Yeah, I think that's, yeah, you said, yeah, so I don't think it was sufficient there.
Let's just think about what it is here, okay, before, you know, it's gonna be the twenty ninth this weekend. I've got one, two, three, four, five, six more Saturdays. It's November third. Okay, November third, okay, let's start work November third. Let, let me. I'm trying to get a road in, okay, before the fifteenth, okay, because Fred's gonna say to me, okay, hey, you know, it's gotta be forty degrees and rising or fifty degrees and rising, whatever it is, okay, let this happen. Okay, I'm right up against it. Okay, I mean, we have a schedule, okay, that says we're paving on the sun, okay? But the, the, the truth of the matter is, okay, we lost a couple of days last week, okay, okay, because of the rain. So, you know, November ninth, okay, it moves pretty quickly.
All right, can we just hear the opinion on the board? Should we just leave it as is?
So respectfully, it's not my responsibility whether there's rain or not. I'm sorry that it's raining. But this is, we love being outdoors in the fall. This is a whole community, admittedly. It says a nuisance. I mean, if you guys aren't gonna, if you guys aren't gonna allow.
A construction site has noise and that's expected.
And I'm not saying.
We knew they were gonna be quiet during this time. No, no, as part of the Saturday permit.
In the morning too, we go to the bus stop. I don't know if the bus is coming because there's a construction, you know.
Can we just go around the table?
Yeah, I mean, I think when we first talked about this, we said, you know, we were open to trying it to see if there's any issues, is all, there's issues. So neighbors are complaining, so.
Well, there's one neighbor complaining.
Well, whatever, that's fine.
I can get more neighbors to complain if it's the number of neighbors. It wasn't clear to me. I asked originally what needs to be happened to have this halted.
So I would just say, you know, no more Saturdays. Just don't, my opinion.
I would leave it as is for now.
Mike?
I would probably leave it. I mean, get it done and out of the way. He, he's up against a deadline to get, you know, when, when the asphalt plants close. And so we're trying, you know, so.
So then you need to take, respectfully, you need to take that out, that, you know, if it's a nuisance, to let you guys know and something can be done about it. Because this is more than a nuisance for more than just me.
So, the Saturday is a privilege. It's not like it's part of, you know, the typical subdivision does say Monday through Friday. I mean, we allow the Saturday.
I'm struggling here because I, I feel for the developer in wanting to get it done and I would like it to get it done, but I also respectfully, you know, hear the abudders' concerns. And we did say if we, if we heard complaints, we would reconsider this, so. I I'm struggling with allowing, continue to allow the Saturdays.
And I would say just take out the Columbus Day Saturday.
I would absolutely take out the Columbus Day. I'm leaning more towards, I don't know.
Well, my professional career has been in construction, so I understand completely what you're up against in terms of time and what it's gonna do. It's gonna prolong the effects of noise and everything for the residents. So to get it done quickly.
During the week.
During the week and Saturdays, that is construction in general. I do, I do agree with Danielle, the fact of Columbus Day. I think you should give them, I mean, it is the most beautiful time of the year around here and it should be a Saturday.
I'd liberate to like, like.
So that's my.
So I would entertain a motion to not allow construction on Saturday, whatever it is.
October sixth.
October sixth, but allow it, the rest, just to get it done. Just give them a little break.
That's fine.
And, I mean, the other thing to remember is that he's working up the road, so they'll be moving, most of the noise will be further up into the development. But one weekend.
So after, after November tenth?
It wasn't clear he was gonna work that weekend anyway.
The good news is, okay, there hasn't been any blasting.
Well, now there'll definitely not be any working that weekend. Well, we've said no blasting on weekends anyway, so.
I'm just, I'm, I am just saying.
We had, at the last meeting, we had allowed working on Saturdays, I think, starting, what was it? September fifteenth through November tenth, so.
And I apologize, I arrived, but I was too late.
No, that's, yeah, no, we.
We knew somebody was coming, I was, I don't know. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to not allow construction at Keys Farm on October sixth.
Second.
For the favor?
Aye.
Plan your barbecue, October sixth.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can I second that motion?
Okay, we're good.
All right, stay for the next one, October.
All right, no Saturdays. Say that now. So the planning board is going to review the fully B project on Silver River Road and provide comments to the zoning board of appeals. This isn't our project, so our input is advisory to the ZBA to help them with their decision. Do you have plans in unpack, Erica?
I'm trying to catch up on which item I'm reading.
Fully B, fully B.
There should be the plan, and I have the overall opinion here if we can.
So. So this is to supply, to, to give comments to ZBA. So if they do allow. Right, Erica, if this is to give ZBA comments to help them with their decision?
Correct, yes.
Well, Danielle.
I'm sorry, what's that?
I said, well, Danielle, resident expert, member of the DRB who's giving plans.
Yes. Yeah, we already had, we had that here, we had that designer review board meeting a while ago. I think we already gave the comments.
I guess, I guess.
Notes on that, but.
Did you give just aesthetic architectural comments or did you give stormwater comments?
I may have mentioned stormwater comments, but it's not within the purview of designer review board, you know, within the purview of ZBA. So majority of the comments, I think, Michelle was there, she talked about, you know, a lot of the aesthetics and. I, it's, I didn't bring my notes from that meeting, but.
Well, do you have comments on, on the stormwater plan? Erica, do you have comments?
Well, I think the fire department had a fair comment that, so it's an underground emergency system that they're proposing full tech chambers and their H twenty voted, voted. However, the emergency vehicles that are gonna be driving over it are heavier than that, so there is concern whether or not the chambers can handle the the extra.
They're gonna be heavier than H twenty?
Yeah.
How they.
I can, I can send you the department comments and fire chief.
Fully moving pumper.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of these chambers, you can ask them to be H S twenty five, so they can either get a thicker chamber or you can require more depth.
Depth.
Oh, I don't know if they can do that. It's still meat, what they need to do.
So where's the, is there a runoff zone? Where are the, where are the buffers?
So the infiltration system, it doesn't appear to have any overflow. I think it's fully infiltrating.
Yeah, that was right. I was, I had asked about. Kind of like the, you know, driver we just talked about, you know, we've got force pavement, there's no overflow, but in this one, they, they really should have.
Do they use impound pavement?
No, they're not. No, 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 but there's, with this. Do they have, do they have the stormwater?
I can, I can show it to you if I could see it. It's actually looking at the station.
Yeah, I guess what I'd wanna see is calculations and do they have proper separation of. Is there a grading plan?
That's a good question.
Oh, yeah, actually, you were talking about elevations?
Yeah, there's grading.
Yeah, page, somewhere in the middle, page four zero.
Oh, I got C, oh, I don't have C four five. Oh, no, there it is.
So it's a shared. So, so it's a shared septic? At two thirty eight, where's the groundwater line here? So there's two wells for four houses, right?
So far it's not all approved, right, Joe McGraw, Board of, so far, there's nothing been approved, right, the, the system's not approved yet, it's all, there's nothing really approved yet, everything is kind of tentatively out there, I mean, I mean, is it some divide a lot, is that even some divisible, I mean, it doesn't mean one family house got approved, or one family house three years ago, to the five element system, that got approved by the town, because they just always last month to, here because of three years, so it's been already approved for a non-40B house to be built there, isn't the last about, if it's, within the last twelve months, if it was approved for a non-40B house, then you can't put a 40B development in there, is that one of the regulations?
And they're not using the same.
The, the ZBA would be the ones to, 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 I, I don't know all of the, the 40Bs and outs.
Right, well, the Board of, the Board of Health would have to agree that the septic system could handle the number of.
I talked to Bill, I mean, and I spoke to him, Bill Perkins from, um, Board of Health, he did a protest back in two thousand and fifteen, and all these designs are tentative, he hasn't even seen these yet, I talked to Jesse Ledeck over at Natural Heritage with the Turtles, he had an informal meeting with these developers back in March, talking about two days ago, and it was just an informal meeting, nothing's been formalized with them either, so, all, everything's out there, but it's not, nothing written formal, they didn't do the landscaping yet, they haven't done the condo things yet, it's, everything's kind of like, out there, but not complete or finished or approved by anybody.
Just to give you like, some history, for instance, Sugar Road, how that kinda worked with the 40B, because you know, they don't have to come before Planning Board, and they don't go through the whole permit, that was originally planned to be, what, like, sixty units, Erica?
It was an apartment complex, I don't know the number.
It was, it was gonna be much bigger.
Yeah.
And I think, that got approved by ZBA, right?
It did.
But then, when they went to the Board of Health, and everything, they realized, well, we can't do this, we, we can't, we don't, we, so the scope of work changed, because they didn't, they couldn't perk what they needed to perk, um, so that's unfortunately kinda how this works.
I know.
With the 40Bs, we have very little.
I own a house right next door, I own the next floor, so I own a barn here, world, two, six months, it was conservation, to be allowed to use my barn that's in one foot above, so from the wetlands, I've got a barn that, existing barn, and they're allowing me to mow a path to my barn, and around my barn, to utilize my barn, I can't, I can't put a vehicle inside my barn, because in case something leaks and goes in the wetlands, because I'm in a hundred buffer zone for the wetlands, but all those properties, I mean, hundred buffer zone from the wetland, and they're allowing park twenty-four vehicles, three per each unit, on the common driveway there.
So.
Because once you mention 40B, you have all these waivers and.
Yeah, so, once you hit 40B, our local zoning doesn't exist, unfortunately.
Well, it does, but, they go by the state, but you have to go by.
They go by the state's laws.
Natural Heritage still applies to the state regulations.
And so, all, any, any of our buffers, any of our setbacks.
I know, it's.
It just doesn't exist.
Unless there's enough 40B houses in the area of ten percent, or if there's a certain percentage that have been approved in the past year or so, like one percent or something, to show that you're working towards the ratio.
What, what is your purview here, then, what's the purpose of this meeting right now?
The purpose of this meeting, because they requested comments from us.
What kind of comments are they looking for you to get?
The zoning board of appeals.
ZBA requested comments.
Of what type?
Well, so our expertise would be stormwater, for instance, which they don't, so, if they, so if the ZBA does grant, uh, a permit for them to do it, so they'll write a special permit to allow it, and, then, they'll put items in there, like, for instance, uh, you know, some, some drainage type thing, I don't know, can you give me some smart drainage type thing?
They're, they're putting in a sub-surface infiltration system, uh, to mitigate.
So that kinda stuff, so they'll, they'll, they'll request that kinda stuff, some acronyms and stuff like that.
I do, I do have some questions on it.
And, uh, they can, they can, they can, they can do it, or they can appeal to the state same as two owners, but, they can at least, they, they at least have a, a place to put requests into the, to the applicant, where hopefully they would work with us.
Now, my understanding is, um, one, they also need to go for another conservation commission, because there are lands here, so, and as part of that, they need to meet the mass state stormwater standards.
Yes.
So, while there are local stuff that can be waived, um, the stormwater component of it is a state standard, and they need to comply with that, um, so they have a storm, I guess my question is, um.
Some page away.
Is we, do we have, um, do we have to give all these comments tonight?
No, I don't know, so, the, the hearing was continued for the Saturday people last over.
Okay.
So, and I figure it would be sort of overwhelming for you to look at this package tonight, and give me all comments, you know, at this.
Yeah, just to be able to kinda go through it, I mean, I don't know if you.
We have, we have plenty of time, so maybe, you know, if you guys can take some time at home, or whenever, take a look at it, and then maybe when we, um, have our next meeting on October ten, um, you can final, you know, finalize your comments then.
Yeah, the one question I would just ask, and it may be in here, and I may be able to answer my own question, just, um, I noticed it's, you're using a two point four one inch per hour infiltration rate, so I'm assuming you're A soils, um, so, with.
Are you talking to?
Okay, maybe I don't think it's.
I got you, I have the soil report right here.
What C's and D's are here, or no?
Uh, let's see the colors, right?
I thought they were C's and D's, I didn't hear about them.
Well, here, I know, Danielle, you'll be able to understand better than I can.
Well, so, let me just, while you, she's looking at it, let me finish my point, whereas if we don't give, if we don't, if we deny this, and then go towards the state, we have no replace, we have no replace at all to set up, so, you know, so it's, so it's a, a means to just set up some type of guide rails.
But that, and I guess that was my, you know, you're looking at a very wet site, with a peninsula of land, that's going to be filled with eight feet of fill, and you're putting two separate nine-bedroom septics on that, or plus one, and you're, and, and so, as a planning board, which I, you're elected officials from our town, so you're representing our town, so, I'm looking at things like your, the open space plan that you got, that everybody just signed off on, and, the, the, um, the, all the things that says we're Bolton, says that this development, in its density, and in its, in, what it's doing to the land is not Bolton, so I would encourage the board, when you're reading this thing through, and getting better acquainted with this document, that you, you read it from the perspective of Bolton, and, and make your recommendations that way.
Yeah, unfortunately, everything we do, just, you know, doesn't.
It counts, Erica, it counts.
Well, no, it doesn't, and this, and actually, it doesn't.
No, it does, it does.
I mean, we, we could request it, but, um.
I mean, certainly this will help the ZBA in their review, so, Danielle has, you know, questions about stormwater.
Do we have this as like a PDF, because I don't.
So, you can ha, you can have that, if you want, I have extra copies of that.
You do, okay.
Yeah, and, um, there is a PDF online, if you wanna look at it.
Okay, no, wait, I'll just take it.
Bob, I'm sorry, so, I had a couple of other questions before this, but I just wanted to comment on what was just discussed here, yeah, I do think it's the board's responsibility for the town to enforce as much as possible, what the town regulations would be under normal circumstances, and if there are things that are egregious, you just normally wouldn't allow, if it weren't a 40B, and I, I think the board should stand up for that, and, you know, if the state has to kick it back down, then so be it, but there are exceptions, there are, there are exceptions, and there are compromises in the process, right, hopefully the developer will, will work with you.
Yeah, we hope, we hope they're a friendly developer, and we hope that they're willing to work with us, um, so, yeah, for sure, that's why, you know, I would like Danielle and Erica to come up with the stormwater, what you were talking about, you know, drainage, where, you know, where's this water draining to?
So I have a question specific to that, I live at the bottom of the hill, at three or two, right at the corner, and there are already issues there, like I talked to Joe Lynch about, recently, and he's, you know, checked into, um, what lines up, there's a lot of runoff coming down both roads, it lands in the bottom there, uh, one of my chief concerns is when there's a lot of rain and melting, uh, flooding goes on to the property, and the septic is from up there, so, in extreme conditions, you know, one risk of contract or septic, anything that's gonna add to contribution of that at the end of the day is going to be problematic, um, not just for those issues, but also for safety, motorcycles especially, if they try to take the corner there, if there's, you know, large puddling, or after the puddling, there's a lot of silt deposits, sand and things that are left, so those are, again, existing concerns that one, that don't get worse.
So you are down gradient of, of where this is, is that my, I just wanted.
Yes, I'm right at the corner of Bon Hill.
But you're above, your house is far above.
My, my house, yeah, I'm not getting any flooding in my house, but my septic system's right in front of it, and I think if you start getting flooding in the area, the septic system, that could be compromised.
I think this was the topic I was gonna talk to after we were done all of our hearings, but, I think that's a very good point, I mean, the, um, the state's stormwater standards basically require you to slow everything down to meet existing, you know, peak rate development, but they don't require you to just meet the peak volume, and there are multiple towns in the state of Massachusetts that have adopted local bylaws to actually make you meet the peak volume, so, if you meet the peak rate, you can still have flooding downstream, when you are developing, you're creating a part of this here, so it's something that I think we should think about as a town, knowing that there are a lot of subdivisions, majority of the stuff that lives in are subdivisions, where there just mean a peak rate, and people are wondering whether downstream water's still getting flooding, if they met all the regulations, and there's a, um, additional protocol that we could put in there, to meet, and I actually brought some files from several towns that have done, and I think it's something we should seriously consider the asking, especially in conditions like this, where there are potential downstream flooding issues that could be affected, and, you know, it's a, a septic system, so they really want to do that.
I agree, I guess.
So, you're also. Yeah, yeah, I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot of concern, especially where we've got large wooded areas that are now being developed, um, you know, we got roads, and again, they're meet, I'm not saying that they're not meeting the standards, they're meeting the state standards, but there's an additional requirement, where if we were asked to meet peak volumes, now you really are.
But is that something the state asked for, or no?
No, the state does not ask that, um, so the state only requires you to meet peak rates, basically slow it down. So, every, there are many towns in the state of Massachusetts, that, um, in the south or west, I mean, I've developed a bunch of them, and it's more expensive for it out there, it's certainly not gonna be, um, the government friendly, just because it's gonna cost more, um, but it really, I think, starts to protect the, the, the areas that are downstream, where we, you know, you're, you're gonna continue to see more flooding downstream as you develop more, um, right off, you know, so, it's just something I wanted to throw in here, um, it may be something we wanna, I don't know if we can even enforce it, because it's not part of our regulations and requirements now.
But, I mean, these are all items that I think, uh, we, we should list, and note, and send to the ZBA.
Yeah. But especially if there's concern with, with increase in volume of runoff downstream.
So, I'm assuming when the project's done, it'll be done so that doesn't happen, but in my concern, maybe it's more of the.
Unnecessarily, that's not what she's saying.
Well, right, so, to your point, but, during the construction, when things are getting disrupted, and the move, you know, water movement isn't very well controlled, yeah, then may actually be enhanced, uh, for a period of several months.
There's a separate permit, so if they're disturbing more than an acre, they need a NFTs, which is a NFTs construction general, I don't know how big this is, um.
It's, it's just an acre.
It's just an acre.
Well, well, no, it's an acre of, of construction.
It's an acre, so you're more disturbing about it.
Or two point six, or double one.
Okay, if they're disturbing more than an acre, then they would need a NFTs construction general permit, and, um, that's a permit that the contractor or the owner would get through, on the EPA, and that dictates how you have to control runoff through construction, so they would need to make sure, um, you know, they're, they're using all the proper rules, instead of the controls, and, and, and what's, um, you know, during construction.
That's a state standard.
That's a federal permit, because we're not, state doesn't need it.
And just one last question on, on the stormwater, so I'm looking at the operation manual, and it seems like a lot of the success for this plan depends on maintenance tasks, semi-annual street sweeping, and semi-annual drainage manholes, and, et cetera, et cetera, how is that going to be done, once the project, you know, who's gonna own that, once the project completed, to, to make sure that what is outlined in this plan continues successfully in, in.
Normally, that, normally that'd be the homeowners association.
So they'll have to have, as part of, of their association, a maintenance plan for maintaining these, uh, VMPs.
Is that required with a 40B?
Yeah, I, I think no matter what, I mean, you can't put in a stormwater VMP and not have a maintenance, a volume to it, so they would have to have some surveillance.
You know, it's like maintaining the wellhead, or the septic, or the landscaping, or anything else, all of that's in the, in the condo.
Especially since it's a septic.
Their next meeting's what, the seventeenth?
So we have time.
So, I would suggest that, anybody with concerns, send them to Erica, she'll send them to us, we'll review the plans, and, uh, maybe at our next meeting.
Yeah, we can have a.
You know, at our next meeting, or.
Stuff at our next meeting.
And, um.
I mean, I would prefer that any of ours that have comments, could send them directly to the ZBA, not the planning board, I think it's gonna get a little too.
Well, definitely to the ZBA, but I didn't know if, like, if it was something that they would wanna.
They could CCS, or so we don't.
I think it's, I think it's great to, to come and attend, and to help provide those comments, I should wrap in them, but I, I think it might get a little cumbersome, if, if I'm having to send comments to both planning board and ZBA, when, at the end of the day, they're all going to ZBA anyway, um, so send them to both boards, we request that, send them to both. Okay.
Could, could we get a list, Erica, for the email, for the email addresses, so that we can do that?
Just to me, just to me, and then I filter into the boards, yeah.
Last name?
So, um, really quick, the, um, NFTs that you had mentioned, just for clarification, I know I'm not gonna address the developer directly, but I'm gonna address the board, so just to be clear, the area that's going to be disturbed is over an acre, and so thus flies a NFTs, or no?
No, it's a disturbance area.
Is the disturbance over an acre?
I don't believe it is.
It's under an acre, so if it's under an acre.
Yeah, I think it was stated yes, at the, at the, um, review meeting on Monday, that it is like an acre or four, it's over an acre.
And how about the, there's a part, a retained part, something, you're gonna dig apart outside the area, or, or floor something, or what's that area, is that, is that a dug, or is that natural, or?
No, that's a compensatory flood storage, so basically.
Okay, so, so what is it, is that dug, or is that just naturally drawn there?
Um, well, there, there, I don't see that, I need to look at the grade plan, but basically, because they're filling within the flood plain, they need to dig out an area.
So may I disturb more than just inside the area, and may I disturb outside?
Well, they're gonna disturb waterways, so they can, a place for the water to go.
Right, but they stole the curving wall land, which they said is only being disturbed inside and over there.
Yeah, that would be part of the disturbance, they would need to.
My own, my own, my last question, was a wrap-up question, was just, are your comments that you make to the, um, zoning board of appeals, are those public record, can, are we allowed to request them, can we request them to you, Erica, or?
Sure.
Okay, Erica, can I just put my name on this, or? But, yeah, thank you, thank you guys.
I mean, I'm not opposed to 40Bs, I think it's fair to tell, for everybody to afford and move in the town, which is awesome, I think this particular lot itself, with all the challenges with the, already wetlands, and the beavers, already blocking up several road, and flooding already, before you get, you know, all this water movement, redirection of water off the.
We understand your concerns, we'll send our comments, I mean, unfortunately, it's not a project before us, so, that's what they requested our comments, so that's what we'll do.
And the more people look at it, the better, you know, the better, I have no idea, isn't better.
We got our expert, Danielle.
Let's not use that word, expert.
So, we appreciate your, we appreciate your eye.
Yeah, you do this for a living, so.
I do.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. So, I, the selectman asked me to change the charter slightly, the only thing that I changed, I don't even know where it is, so, one of the, one of the selectmen asked me to, um, specifically state how many of board members versus residents would be on there, so, I came up with at least four board members, consisting of planning board, selectmen, housing authority, board of health, or any other board of any, so at least four, kind of elected appointed people, and then, at most, three, none, you guys good with that change? Uh, we didn't state it, no, it's.
Yeah, so that's fine.
We didn't state to them, we need to open the CEO, who, who is of interest in, you know.
But, it was, it was Bob, he just wanted to make sure that, you know, it was clear.
Yeah, I think I had asked, in that direction, anyway.
Yeah, I think so.
He kinda said, let's keep it open.
So, just, I mean, if it's gonna be, well, if it's gonna be, if it's gonna be easier for the selectmen to approve it, then it's probably, uh, and then, we really need to, you know, it's ten thirty, we really need to start going over.
The potential, yeah, so, with that, I, I, we had talked about one of the things we wanted to do, you know how our, our regulations, for us, just to get off the ten-year storm plan, we always ask them to meet the state's stormwater standards, so along that line, one, I think we should revise our法律, just to say, the, the, the state's stormwater standards, but along that, I would like to add in, and let me know what you guys think, I mean, if you. Let me know what you guys feel, I mean, if you, I just, um, one, just doing this for a living and seeing, um, the, the way our climate is changing and way I'm having to rework my design to mitigate for some of that. Um, and two, just, you know, understanding, uh, you know, you can push a lot more on commercial developers and, um, businesses than you can on subdivisions and residential. So it's easier to, you know, kinda get that, whereas we don't have that in town. We're, we're, we're the majority of resident, um, residences and having the subdivisions going. I think putting in place that additional, um, requirement to meet peak rate, excuse me, peak volumes. It would be the exact same as the state, so the state, of course, you made two, ten and hundred year peak rates, you'd have to meet the peak volumes for two, ten and hundred year. Um, and they're always in the calculation, so you can see that they don't meet them and that they're increasing volume off. Um, so it's just, uh, I, I think it would, and I'd be willing to draft up the, the bylaw and everything, but I wanted to see if you guys.
So how different of a cost, you said it would be drastic, would it be drastic?
It, well, so it depends, like, the example for the permeable pavement, um, there's no change because, because of the storage they're providing, they're meeting their peak rates and volumes, like, they had zero for proposed under all of that. So for them, there's no change. Um, for others, if, you know, it's, it really is, um.
I guess what I'm asking is, would be switching to peak volume versus peak rate?
Well, it's not switching, it's meeting both, meeting both.
Oh, so meeting both?
It did, meeting, yeah.
Would it, would it be a hindrance to the point of preventing development, business development? Like, how much, I don't understand how much of an impact.
It's like adding bigger catch basin stream, that sort of.
No, it's adding bigger storage, so really in order to meet it, you really need volume. So it's your basins, it's not your catch basin, it's, it's your either subsurface system or your drainage basins, your bio retention areas, you know, it's, it's adding more volume.
Is it a percentage larger?
It, you know, it's unfortunately, it's site dependent, it depends on your soils, your hydraulic, you know, your infiltration rate. I mean, there's, there's a multiple things that.
Yeah, I would just like to understand how much of it, how much more of an impact to a development, it would be cost-wise.
Um, it's, it's hard, it's hard to.
Like a Keys Farm, for example, I mean, would, presumably we're doing something there, like.
Yeah, I didn't have the, um, actually, did I, did you have a stormwater? No, that's, that's, yeah, I don't have it in front of me, so I can't look to see.
Maybe if you, if you took one of our.
I mean, I will say, it's a, it's a cost increase, there's, there's definitely a cost increase. But the benefit, I think, far outweighs that cost increase because you're now, you're really mitigating the runoff. And, and the fact is, is our rainfalls are going up. And so we're even using higher rainfall events when we're sizing things. So these things are gonna get bigger and bigger as we move forward in the future anyways. But this really, um, kinda starts to get at, I, I mean, the concerns of having, um, you know, big subdivision going in and you're down at the bottom.
Yeah, yep, I, I.
You've got wetlands and stuff like that, so it's just.
I'm excited by your passion, I just wanna understand that we're not.
Some of the cost, I don't think it's, um.
I just don't wanna be like, develop, be like, oh my god, we're not developing there now, you know?
Do other towns require this?
Oh, yeah, so South Borough, I, I mean, West, I mean, I've worked in multiple towns that require it. And all it means is you have a bigger stormwater system and you've figured it out and you make it work. Um, and those are the towns, I mean, as, you could also, I mean, go to the example, Cambridge is one of those again, it's a city, it's not us, but they, they go way above and beyond.
At its most, I remember you.
Yeah, um, so we, we struck the cottage over late. On the senior housing bylaw, which I think the senior housing is probably a best avenue for affordable. And I don't know if you guys looked at the one that Erica sent out for Littleton, I looked up one for Adley and then another one for Brandy, I think was the name of the town, Dandy?
Brandy.
Yeah, yeah. Um, you read these bylaws, they almost look like our cottage over late. It's very similar to the structure and layout, what they do. They add in like a Bolton Manor type building, like a bigger building with apartments. Um, and the other thing, if we're trying to make it so, Erica, what I was talking about this with Erica is, if we age restrict it, even though they're affordable, they don't count towards our counting.
Oh, it's housing, really?
Because, because their age was were discriminated towards others, yeah.
So what Littleton did is, and what I was talking about with Erica issue, is you design a unit that only a senior would wanna live in, so.
Oh, okay, like a one-story unit.
One story.
And it for fifty.
One bedroom, like, like, let's go, like, Ada Wulfs, Ada whatever her name is.
I can't remember her last name.
I mean, what the seniors want is eight hundred square, even that's probably big. Like, maybe max eight hundred square feet, one bedroom. I know that my wife's grandmother stayed at a place like this where it's pretty much like a studio apartment, like, a bed, a bathroom, a little kitchenette. You know, that's, I think probably what Bolton Manor is like inside.
It is, yeah, I've seen.
That's what we should do, I think, you know, make sure, because, because, and then we don't age restrict.
Yeah.
If, you know, somebody's not moving in there with five kids, you know, maybe one, so that's fine. Uh, and even that, probably not, you know?
What would it be called, like a cottage? That sounds like a real true cottage over late.
I think we still can call it a senior development.
Yeah.
But we just don't have it.
We just don't age restrict it.
It's the deed's on the BE, you know?
Yeah, yeah, um, we call it a senior development. I don't even think, like, the Littleton one has, I think they have, like, separated units and they have some condos, like, some, like, maximum. I, I really just wanna like break it down simple to like something like the Manor, you know, whether it's.
How was the Manor get, how was the Manor zone, is that a 40B?
It's 40B, a HUD, right?
Yeah, HUD, it's twenty-eight units, but it's all waiting lists and I know other communities that have done similar projects and they're very successful. They're very popular, people are looking for rent at, you know, at that age.
So, so the, the, you know, so we take out that, so we can get the affordable account. Uh, I, I say we just focus on very small, cheap units, you know, eight hundred square feet at most, eight hundred square feet, I had a two-bedroom apartment, eight hundred square feet. You know, that's even more than kind of what I envisioned. Um, the other, the other kinda issue, what I found is those three bylaws, like, within the first couple of paragraphs, they say, at the street, you have to have public water and public sewer, you know, which of course we don't have.
Yeah, but that's, that's probably because of the town's economy, yeah, so I think that's fine, I mean, that we think.
Or that's to keep them in the more developed part of the town and not out of them. What I think, what I, what I think we could do, 'cause, 'cause people are gonna be concerned about water, which we found at last year's county town meeting. I think we should add something in where we require a flow test or a water study or, you know, something like that to make sure that, when, like, when we dug the well for the school or whatever, you know, we checked gallons per minute or whatever.
But people, I was concerned at the meeting though, was that there, it's a shared aquifer.
Right.
And now if you put in dense development, they're draining it, that's just never enough.
You need a groundwater study then, basically.
Maybe, yeah, that's expensive.
Is that a thing?
I mean, I, I don't do them, so I don't, um.
Or, I, I mean, like, just the peak, like the flow and all.
But again, the flow is different than what you're.
What you're available.
Yeah, yeah, no, you're comparing two things, I mean, one, you need to understand where the existing groundwater is and how much withdrawal you're going to do. Um, and compare that with the surrounding area and just.
I mean, we, we need something because without any, without addressing it at all, it won't pass again. So we need to at least say that we require some type of study or something, you know, to make sure.
Yeah, again, just trying to make sure, I mean, we need to make sure it's not something that's so onerous that.
That's, that's, yeah, that's the only thing.
Yeah, I mean.
Well, but we do wanna take it into account, right?
Yeah, yeah.
We wanna prove something, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure what we wanna prove to, to, to do.
Well, I think what we're trying to.
I, I know what we're, I know the concern, I'm just not quite sure, you know, so do you do a flow test and you run for a week and, and, or, you know, and measure this around wells and see if they drop? I mean, I'm not an expert in this area, I'm not an expert in this area, but I assume, I mean, I don't know how much a geologist costs, but I assume this, I assume there's some geologist, you know, who studies, studies.
Well, you can, no, but you, I don't, I don't think you need to do an actual flow test, I think you can do, um, as, I mean, you, you, you put one or two wells, you, you know, you do all the study, um, the geotechnical study to understand where the groundwater is and all that type of stuff. And then you do your calculations for your water withdrawal and then, you know, you can do a study to show how much, um, that potential water withdrawal will have on the surrounding area.
Yeah, write that down.
No, I don't know how to do that, but, um, there, you know, there's absolutely people who can do that.
We need to address it or else we're gonna get, you know, we're gonna get tomatoed off the stage again.
Would it be like individual buildings or would it be an apartment?
I, I was just thinking something like the Manor, but, I mean.
I think that flexibility in the bylaw.
Oh, like, yeah, like.
I, I, I actually.
I don't care what, as long as we keep the size small.
Yeah.
And if you wanna put, if you wanna put little tiny, like, you know, tiny house things, fine, whatever, whatever works for you, but as long as the size is small, they're affordable, we can consider them affordable. And I think the goal should be a hundred percent affordable.
Hundred percent?
Shouldn't it be? I mean, if they're like rental units, they're a hundred percent affordable, right?
I don't know, I'll find that out.
Can we specify that they're rental units or?
Because, I mean, they're all rental, nobody owns in Bolton Manor, right? They're rentals.
They're both, they're all rentals.
Yeah. I think rentals are a hundred percent affordable, right?
Yeah.
I mean.
Might wanna do an impact on traffic too, definitely.
Yeah, we always, we always require that.
Yeah, but then we usually waive it. I mean, so.
Well, yeah, yeah. Just in what I, people are very adamant about traffic patterns in the twenty seventeen.
Yeah.
That's awful.
Yeah, um, but that's, that's my thought, and I think if you give an affordable housing to senior, that's a good carrot on the end of the stick to the town meeting to pass it. You know, we really, the cottage over late really didn't give us much affordable, you know?
Yeah.
And so.
So this would be just rental then and not.
I mean, that's my thinking, I mean, I would love it, you know, I don't think.
Should you give it an option?
Well, I don't think we should go lower than like fifty percent affordable, you know? I think there should be some huge number of affordable, personally.
Just saying using mixed use as well, and like a, living on a top, retail on bottom.
Well, I mean, we have the mixed use over late, which, that kind of exists now. So I don't, I don't think we have to.
No, I know.
I don't think it needs to be mixed use because we do have a mixed use of village over late district, which would be like apartments on the top.
Right, right.
So I think we could just focus on, I mean, if we can get like a forty unit thing like the Manor. So we're seventeen hundred, ten percent of seventeen hundred houses, hundred and seventy, one percent is seventeen, half percent is eight. We need eight units to delay, eight units in a year, and as long as we're working towards a plan, that, that we could start telling the state, hey, we're working towards this plan, we got eight units. So if we get forty units, twenty, thirty, forty units in one development, we'd be really showing progress where when something comes up with a three hundred unit, you know, 40B and the Kane property, you could be like, whoa, 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 we're working here, we're, we're getting it done, you know? So this is the best opportunity I see to get that happening, and that's why I almost say a hundred percent affordable, I think.
And so we can require to do rentals in the, in the bylaw?
Um, if it's apartment complex style, um, yeah, so, yeah.
Yeah, sounds good.
Um, multi-unit housing by law, what was that again? Oh, that's pretty much the same thing, but not, well, but that, it's the same thing, just not senior, but now we're, now we're all combining that into one.
Yeah, so that's all the big one.
It's all one. Revised tank size for gas station. Um, so I talked to David Kane, you know, they wanted to put in a gas station where the current gas station is, but they want the forty thousand gallons. It would need to go before town meeting, you know, that's not something that the ZBA could grant, I don't think, you know? I don't see a reason why we wouldn't allow it, it would be less trips, you know, less fill-ups, so it's just.
It's gonna be tough to pass, I think it's gonna be.
Erica, your optimism's so adorable.
If you have twenty thousand gallons leaking.
You know, I mean.
They're gonna say it's gonna, like, that bylaw prevents other people from moving in.
Yeah.
They're, they're.
For a bigger gas station or a bigger.
Right.
I mean, I think it makes sense, I, cause I think to reduce truck traffic is definitely worth it, um, but I think it's gonna be hard, so.
Okay.
Given what the, the prices are there, how many, how many times do they get filled?
Yeah, let's just, I just wanna, update, update home occupation by law, what did you want with that, Erica?
I, you know, I just thought maybe the board would wanna take a, a look at it and see if you wanted to add more detail to it, because right now it's really a blank slate. It really doesn't have a lot of meat on the bone, so.
Okay.
I don't know specifics, but if that's something you're interested in, we could, you know, pull it next time and really.
Compare it to some other town.
Yeah, and see if, you know, we, we feel that there should be, uh, more regulation, more items in there that will, you know, might, uh, really be able to evaluate it.
So this is one, the next one I think we should definitely do, correct limited business, business industrial zoning lines to actual property lines. So I think I talked about this lately, we should lock, we should lock the actual zones to property lines. So that gas station, for instance, the one that currently exists, they would like to put up a new gas station, but the business zone, the limited business zone.
Oh, goes through there, okay.
It goes right through the middle of the lot, so they would have to build a gas station like.
No, you're right, we should absolutely should do that.
There's no reason for it to not be locked to the property.
And it's the same, the Kane property, you know, that's what, what sank them at town meeting was.
Yeah.
Yeah, or it should, it should, it should be built to property lines. Just, just a little background, although typically they set it based on so many feet from the center line of the road because property lines over time change. I think that's the reason, reason behind that, to just know that, you know, lot lines can change in the future, so we could move it and then it will still not make sense.
I think, I still think, I'd rather have, if a lot line moves, it moves with the lot line, or, I don't, wouldn't it?
Well, I mean, I, I think if somebody's looking to, to change lot lines in the future, then, you know, they'd have to, they have to take into account the, the. Well, zoning.
Yeah, it's like the.
So the zone would change, you'd have to have a separate bylaw at town meeting to change the zone again. I don't think we're saying walk it in perpetu, you know, perpetually, whatever the words.
We're saying it just.
We're setting it, yeah.
Yeah, it's specific.
At the current lot lines, just reset the zone, so.
Which probably a lot of those lots have existed since the zoning was created.
Yeah, right.
You know, and the lot lines, you know, like, like the Kane property, the lot lines haven't changed. It's just, you know, when the line was originally drawn, it was.
I would just like to, you know, walk it in where it makes sense.
Would that bylaw rezone existing properties?
No, just like if you're currently in, like, they, they have.
It's not gonna rezone exist now, no.
Well, let's think about that though, because there are properties that have, like Erica's saying, it's split between commercial and residential. So right now, that, that owner has potential to do either. If we change it and it's all affordable, they no longer can be residential, so that will impact them.
Yeah, but.
I mean, we see it as a benefit, but they may not, I don't know.
Well, how many, how many properties do we think that this affects?
Well, it's that one I know, for instance.
I don't think it impacts, I don't think it impacts.
Cause if it only impacts a few, I mean, we could easily reach out to those existing owners and say, look, this is what we're proposing, do you have any objections?
I, I know that person's impacted and I would like that, you know, I see no reason for that to be developed.
What I'll do is I'll just, I'll print out a map, just put color coding as areas that would change.
And we'll look at it, okay.
Um, allow bed and breakfasts in residential zone, we have some anyway.
Why are we, oh.
We don't allow hotels and motels, you know, I don't know whether you wanna touch that or not, it's not a huge one, but. Require a design review board on major residential plan developments.
Yes, I think that's a good idea, yeah.
That's an upgrade, just a tomorrow for Danielle, so.
Rezoning of Cracker Barrel and seven eleven, seven thirteen Main Street, I brought this up last year, Main Street people kinda yelled at us and we backed away, but I still think that it should be limited business, those properties, it would.
I don't know, they were pretty adamant about that.
We should do it because we're scared, we should do what's right for the town and.
Slope, very slope.
And those properties make sense to be businesses, and if, if somebody's hesitant to buy into their property because they have to go before ZBA for every little thing they do, the value of the property is lessened, that's my only thought. Allow more than one building in commercial properties, that's one I definitely would, wanna a hundred percent wanna do.
Yeah, that's fine, I think, yeah.
I don't know if we stat a number or if we just say we allow multiple, you know, you, you have your coverage and if you wanna divide it up into whatever pads, whatever the planning board seems fit, seems, feels fit. You know, so I definitely want that one. Updating inclusionary housing bylaws, density bonuses, allow for multi-family housing to incentivize those. So what were you thinking with this, Erica?
This is sort of a carryover from when we did the, uh, the, you know, the revision to the, uh, the fee and lieu, we had talked about possibly doing density bonuses and up in a subsequent, you know, APM. Um, so, you know, if the more affordable they do, the higher density they can have, um.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so it's like dangling, it's like dangling little carrots, like, oh, if you do this, now we'll be back.
So could we allow higher density? I mean, phosphids just.
Well, that's what the inclusionary would have that caveat that they, they could. Well, that's what the inclusionary would have that caveat that they, they could.
So they can get a little more density.
Right, I know other towns that do that, and then, um, you know, multi-family, you know, allow the affordable to be a multi-family because it's cheaper to build.
So you're talking about a duplex?
Yeah.
So we don't allow duplexes at all?
No, I mean, it's happening at Key Farm.
So we would say if you make one of the units affordable, then you can have a duplex?
Something like that.
Would we have a zone, or are we saying town wide or duplex zone?
It's just, it's just.
I know Doug Story, Doug Story brought it up, I think it's a good idea, I suppose.
Yeah, I did, it's a carryover again, so it's up to the board.
Um, yeah, people are gonna push shots against that, I think, but.
Go for turban.
But it was great, that's what. Yeah, yeah, I know, Aquifer Protection Overlay District.
What's that?
What is that?
This is something that Jonathan Keefe brought up when he was on the plane. It just kind of hangs around.
I agree realistically, what, what, what is, what?
Well, so his whole thinking is, so if you think that the, the old ski jump hill behind Bolton Orchard, the water running up there into the aquifer, he was just saying, you have a particular area or zone that, you know, you protect that we know water's running into the aquifer.
Well, so typically with an aquifer protection overlay district, as soon as it's also put on there, it affects your bylaws too because now you have to treat your stormwater to a higher level, so because it's going into an aquifer.
Yeah, I mean, when, I know when he brought it up when, when we were on board, it's like, I was like.
All of Bolton, it's, to me, is just, you know, we all have private wells.
Yeah.
So it's, um, I don't know how you zone the whole town, but I don't know.
That was his thinking when he brought it up, and it kind of just stays on this list and.
There might be a, you know, with updating the stormwater stuff that I was talking about before, we might not need to have the aquifer, I don't know, or you could roll it into one.
Medium scale solar bylaw, so right now we zone two fifty kilowatts or above.
Correct.
So the question is, did we want to do two forty-nine and below?
I don't think it's been an issue to date, so.
No.
Let's pass that.
Yeah, general cleanup of zoning bylaw, which I think there's a lot of areas, we have a lot of waivers every single time that we probably should take care of that so we don't have to spend an entire meeting on waivers.
Exactly takes some time though, so maybe we want to tackle that in a year where we don't have some of these other major bylaws coming forward.
Well, there are any, yeah, that's fine.
I mean, because I don't, I want, I'm trying to think of things, nothing comes to mind at the moment, I know.
No, but the one that comes to mind is we only require the ten-year storm to be treated for, what is it, for?
Oh, for the common driveway?
Yes.
That's in the regulation, we can do that at any time.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Okay, so that's not a problem.
We, we could do it, it's just, it's just a public hearing, it's not, um, yeah.
Okay, well, then that we're blocked.
But we, yeah, we should definitely do that though.
Yeah, because I just, I hate asking for them to comply with the stormwater standards and I'd be like, well, it's fine.
What, I totally, and so I feel like we need to have one night of hearings to go through the subdivision rules ranks again and the common driveway and just get it done, fix them.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like, I'd like phosphids to change so it only counts residential. So we, so we bring tadmore in.
Say that again?
You know, tadmore counted the commercial zone card.
But then we told them to take it out.
Yeah, yeah, that, they didn't back, they still took credit for it, so, um, but yeah, but because then they, they were under the bylaw, they're entitled to it, but, you know, if we're, if we want to preserve the commercial zone.
Did it end up that way though? I thought they ended up.
I, no, the, 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 the number of units, I think, was still covered by.
No, I think they did resubmit a revised plan that showed the byright plan and just the residential portion.
I thought.
Um, and they.
They were specifically asked them to.
You, you specifically asked that, and they did resubmit that, it's just they were able to make it work.
Yeah.
Um, so they, we worked.
Yeah, and they saw, and they're still, there is a chunk of it that they did have to take out of the, of the commercial.
I'll, I'll check the bylaw on that.
I mean, that, well, that was actually a one where the, you know, a business lot and a residential, there was one lot with multiple things, so. I mean, we cleaned that up and the other one, I don't know. Yeah. Small-tail marijuana grow facility residential zone.
Oh, boy.
Too hot, I don't know, I mean, if nobody's pushing us to do it, I don't want to do it.
Let's, let's wait and see if, um, who was the, the woman who was.
I talked, I talked to her, I said, I said, I was like, if you're not here pushing on us, they might probably not gonna do it.
I mean, I'd be fine if it just went another year, but if she's really strong about that, then I think it's, we need to do our due diligence and help her, but.
Um, if nobody's, don't ask us to do it. Yeah.
Yeah, okay, we're gonna pass over that one from now.
Yeah, hot potato. Short-term rentals Airbnb, I mean, we kind of shut those people down and fox run, I don't know if that's what we want to do.
Is that an issue? Do we know at all?
Get a hold of them, um, well, no, I mean, they, you know, they can't.
They sold the house.
Oh, did they?
Yeah, someone else moved into it.
Yeah, party house in town.
And then can I add one, the stormwater?
Yep.
So what are we focusing on for this year?
Huh?
So what are we focusing on? We're doing the senior housing bylaw?
Yeah, without a doubt.
Okay, I just need to.
Correcting, correct, look at the, the business and lock them to lines.
So the zoning lines?
Um, multiple, um, buildings within limited business, uh, zones.
Which one is that?
More than one building on commercial properties.
Yeah, exactly.
One, two, three, four. Okay, I think we should do the required design review board on major residence, that would be very easy to do, I think that's important.
Yeah.
You shouldn't have me present that though, because I have conflict interest.
Okay, and then the stormwater, that's a lot, that's a lot, I don't even know if we're gonna get, hopefully we'll get to all of that, but.
I can put the whole stormwater one together, because I've got a couple samples from other towns.
So what did you want with the stormwater?
It's to adopt a little stormwater, I mean, the other option I'd like, I mean, there's lots that I could.
Committee?
No, no, I just, um, I, right now, um.
Can we name you Stormwater Czar?
Um.
Core Stormy.
Yeah. Um, no, I'll, I'll put together a draft and I can go over what.
Yeah, you just have to explain to me the impact, you have to sell it to me.
I think, I, it, the impact will be, you're not gonna have downstream flooding.
Which is good.
From the development that goes on.
Yeah, that's good.
And it's a huge, I think, selling point for the town. While it may cost, um, some more money for some developers, it's not, uh, an all.
Yeah, it's gonna save the town money, right, for mediating, so.
Yeah, it keeps, it keeps the water local, it keeps it on site. Um, there are other towns that are doing it, Southboro's one, Weston's one, um, I'm trying to think of ones around here, I mean, there's a lot more as you get closer to the city that are doing it, but, um, Norfolk's one, um, I think even Sherborn might be one, so, yeah, there's.
So if we just keep it to those five, because then the other big thing we'll do in the year is the house, you know, hopefully we get the committee and the housing production plans going on, and that's gonna, you know, we're gonna be right there with them, so. Maybe one or two of us are on it, would you have some discussion?
Is, I know you're in it, is this administrative right now, can I comment anyway?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that's fine.
I, I'll be super quick, I just wanted to know if the board was considering, um, uh, modifying the phosphid, um, bylaw at all? That, um, in terms of the, in lieu of, uh, a unit where the developers are opting more to pay right now, um, was there any consideration of how to, how to solidify that so that we get more, uh, housing, uh, affordable housing out of these developments instead of payment to go towards a housing trust and getting people to, it, it, was there any consideration?
Yeah, I mean, we talked, we talked, I mean, still, it's, it's just kind of tough when you have like four hundred, four thousand square foot houses to then have them build an affordable unit, you end up, it's just, like, people can't qualify. So they're having trouble when a house costs, say, a hundred and eighty thousand, which is technically affordable for Bolton, because it's, but they're having somebody have a hard time qualifying for it. So I do agree with you, we want the affordable units, and I think it worked out well with the Keys Farm having the duplex in the old house, so that's gonna work out. But it might make more sense to take the money and buy down Bolton Woods Way House, you know?
Yeah, I mean, the, the, the housing trust takes the, the fee and lieu that they used to buy down and make.
Has that been happening?
Make other units affordable that, that.
Yeah, it did happen, but actually, like I said, there's, there's been, and I think it's an agenda item tomorrow night in the.
In the selectmen's meeting, yeah.
Um, they're having a hard time finding somebody who qualifies, because you need to have somebody who fits a, you know, qualify for affordable, but then can also take out a mortgage for.
That much money.
Hundred and seventy thousand, which is hard, it's a very small window of people, I guess.
So, and this is all, I know a lot of this will get addressed in, in the, um, what is it, the housing production plan and things like that.
Yeah, exactly, sounds like you're interested.
So I'm not that interested, I'm just, I'm a little busy at the moment, no.
We're all busy.
We're all, we're all, well, yes, but exactly, so, you know, but let's get this one done first and then move on. But, but, but that's where my wheelhouse is right now, is, you know, thinking about how can we get more, um, uh, houses to qualify in this town so that we can get there, you know, or at least get to that point five or whatever we need to get.
I nominate Stasha Downey as a resident.
No way, I will support you though very much in, in your endeavors, I appreciate your time, this is, we're gonna give this a long meeting.
Two, two means a rower, I love it, oh my goodness.
I gotta stop, I guess it's my fault, huh? You blame me, right?
I don't blame you.
Totally.
I blame you.
I mean, we could have taken Andy, we could have taken Andy off the pocket tonight, because that ended up being.
Oh my god, all right.
Well, I don't know, maybe they'll, I'll make, what's your no joke?
Second, on paper.
All right.